Hi, how are you?
Good.
Yes, I am. Um, I don't know if he said I would be able to advance my deck. I don't know about his, if he's got slides as well. Okay, then I'll be advancing that one.
Yeah, I will show you.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna switch.
And did you use the PowerPoint or the PDF?
Great.
Oh, you'll do that for me?
Then I'll just switch it over.
And then I'll.
Yeah, you could use, you could use the mouse.
I'm less likely to over click if I just use those. I also, I also have materials to pass out to council members.
Okay, I can put it up for them.
Okay.
During or can, it's for them to look at afterwards?
They can have it afterwards.
Okay.
Yeah. It's basically all of the jurisdiction for housing information that I go through in my presentation.
And you can let them know.
How are you?
Wonderful.
Fantastic.
What might be your name?
I'm Kim. Yeah, good to see you. Welcome.
Yes, thank you.
Then I can remind you just.
Oh, I'm a singer. I have no problems with microphones. You actually may have to. I'm very comfortable with microphones.
I'm sorry.
All right, good evening, good afternoon, everyone. This meeting is now in order. Today is Tuesday, July 15th, 2025. Ms. Vermillion, will you please call roll?
Mayor Buck?
Here.
Councilors Windlin?
Here.
Verdict?
Here.
We have Counselor Corrigan on Zoom. Counselor Raff?
Here.
Counselor Afghan? And at this time, Counselor Afghan is excused.
Counselor Boob.
I mean, Maboo.
Get out of here.
Maboo. Sorry about that. Correction. Counselor, Counselor Maboo is excused.
That was great. All right. Thank you very much. Everyone, will you please stand, remove your hats, and join us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
All right, thank you, everyone. The first item on our agenda is public comment. Ms. Vermillion, has anyone submitted any public? Is there anyone here for public comment? Anyone submit? Is there anyone here who'd like to deliver any public comments? Okay. All right. See, now that we're gonna move to the, the lights, and they're doing their thing. Okay. Well, we're gonna move to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda tonight is just one item. This is Resolution 25-36. It's a resolution of the council authorizing an IGA with broadband user groups. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 25-36?
Move to adopt Resolution 2536.
Second.
All right, the motion's been made by Counselor Windlin, seconded by Counselor Verdict. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Did our, did our virtual colleagues signal any? Okay, motion passes seven zero then. Thank you very much.
Six zero.
Oh, 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 he's, oh, he's not there. Oh, six zero. Excuse me. Six zero. That's right.
That's why I'm sitting in this chair.
That's right. Okay, now moving on to council business. Moving to item 7.1. This is consideration of Resolution 25-37, authorizing the execution and delivery of the WFIU loan with the EPA for the wastewater treatment plant facility. And we have Mr. Bratus, Director Cross, here to talk to us about it. Good afternoon to you both.
Good afternoon. Mayor, councilors, thank you for having me. My name is Stefan Bratus. I'm the Director of Special Projects. Joining me today is Finance Director Sean Cross. And we're here to talk about the wastewater treatment facility project. That was, I came to you all a little bit ago in regards to a special procurement to do some work on site for cultural resources as well as some geotechnical work. And at that time, I gave a general overview of the current project status, where we're at and where we're headed. Today, focusing a little bit more on the financial aspects of the project. We have a funding strategy that consists of a couple of different resources or sources, one of which being utility revenues. There's also City of Portland cost share payments that would come. There's also system development charges. And finally, there's public financing. And that is in the form of both municipal bonds, traditional municipal bonds, as well as the Environmental Protection Agency's WFIU loan. And so this item that we bring to you today is seeking the, to provide authority to city staff to execute that loan with the EPA. So if there's any questions, we're happy to help answer those and provide any other information that we can at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, one question we had was, was just in regards to the loan, you know, document, the particulars of the loan are not identified, you know, in the, in the report. Could you maybe speak to why we don't have the kind of those documents before us, before we approve?
Do you want to, I can do it, or do you want to take that, or I can do it?
Current, I say currently, we are working with the EPA and with our outside attorneys on drafting the agreement. It's almost complete, but not completely complete at this time. Basically, do you want me to talk about why the WFIU loan? Or, or why we want to do the WFIU loan? Or just where?
What, do we have like a kind of a estimated? I mean, I think we've, we've all heard, been hearing for a couple of years or plus about the WFIU loan and are all, you know, have a good understanding of, of the benefits that it brings. And we've been advocating for it. And so it's, it's great that we're at this stage. I think we understand too, the, the exigency of, of adopting the loan. You know, the timeline is not indefinite and trying to work through the, the, the schedule. Is there a timeline for when we think the loan will be ready for execution?
I, I think it's fairly imminent. We're probably a month to two months away from executing this loan with the EPA. There's some, some minor unresolved comments that we'll be coordinating with amongst the EPA and then our council, our consultants. But we should be able to settle those shortly.
Okay.
It'd be useful for you to explain that even though we're gonna approve the loan agreement, we're not actually gonna draw on the loan until we have a project. So they're not actually, they're authorizing future debt, but they're not actually incurring the debt through this action.
No, this is very similar to a line of credit like we did for North Anchor. If we don't actually start a project, we don't draw funds, there's no debt to repay.
Gotcha. I think, I don't know what my colleagues feel, but just, I mean, this is sizable loan. You know, it's over $123 million. And is there anything that's precluding us from waiting until we have the agreement and then bringing it, bringing this item back to the council with the agreement? So we've had a chance to look at the actual agreement for authorizing it to be executed?
More, it was about the timing. I was thinking this was more like issuing bonds. And this is what we've done in the past, is you've authorized us to go issue, you know, bonds for the water treatment plant, bonds for the lowest plant, or the lowest projects. But yes, we can bring back a draft. There still might be some back and forth with the EPA, but we can bring back a draft.
I think if it was.
It's more, and we're trying to get this done within this federal fiscal year.
Gotcha. Which ends at the end of September.
It does, but things are slowing down on EPA side. Like things that we're supposed to close today for other customer, you know, other jurisdictions have now been pushed back a bit. So it's more time, but yeah, we can bring back a draft.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Afghan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is this a loan or is it a credit line?
It's, it's a loan, but it works very similar to a line of credit. We don't pay anything until we start drawing. Like if we, everything, all the stars align and we actually started to get the project working next March, and we drew our first draw on that, that's when the interest would start calculating. The difference between this and other lines of credit is, and why it's so advantageous to us, is we'd actually do not need to start making our payments back until after substantial completion of the project. And even there, we can then still push it out five more years. It helps us with the rates that we'd have to charge customers to pay. And we could almost get it pretty close to when the lowest bonds are coming off.
Understood, thank you.
But it is a loan.
Yes, understood. Next question is, are we going to be able to do our project without this loan? And it's a very high level question.
Yes, we would be able to do it, but it would cost, we'd have to raise rates on a, upfront a lot quicker for a more traditional financing.
So this has been part of our plan?
Yes.
To have this loan in order to get the project done at a reasonable cost for our taxpayers?
Yes.
So from my perspective, it's a, we have to do this. But what is preventing me from making that recommendation is that the terms and conditions are unknown to me. And those are, I think, what the mayor is also asking. If I knew the terms and conditions, then that would be an easy decision for me or would be a very hard decision. Right now, I don't know what we're committing to, even though you're not saying, we're not going to sign it right now, but we're basically giving you the authorization to go make it happen. So for me, Mr. Mayor, right now, we have to do this, yes, but we need to understand the terms and conditions.
How do you feel about that?
I totally get what you're saying. And I would say that if we were floating a bond for a, a new firehouse, I, Chris is in the audience, so I just had to say that. It would be a much smaller number, and I think this is probably the largest bond that we've done. Would this be correct in the city's history?
Yes and no. Lois was probably bigger.
Right, but it was a shared expense.
But we split it between two years.
Right. So I'm kind of, well, I think we've talked about this WFIU loan for a long time. I think it, it would help me to know the overview of exactly how it's going to work. Also, I think for the public, just to understand the shift in rates, possibilities, and the general terms. I'd feel more comfortable, I think you guys can execute it just fine. I don't have a problem with that. And there's no hesitation from my perspective on moving forward with this. I guess I would, it was just, I would say it's like buying our first big house. This is a pretty big project. I'd like to know kind of exactly what I'm sort of signing when we approve this. That's what, if I say yes, it means that I have the authorization to sign. And I would like to have just a little bit more of a summarization of terms and conditions. So, okay, the bookends are talking. And if, and if it's in substantially complete and it's just kind of immaterial?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask these guys, is how close are we? Could we share with the council a draft and identify the terms of the contract that are still being negotiated? Is it possible for us to just highlight the paragraphs where we haven't? Because part of, I think, our concern is to get the, the more actions you've taken to secure this under the, in the current environment, the more likely it is that this option is available to. This gives the city more flexibility and control. And if we wait, given what's happening at federal agencies, we're concerned that it might not be available to us. So I think the question for you guys is, do we have a draft to the place where we feel like we could show it to the council and the public without compromising our negotiations with EPA?
Yes.
So could we come back as fast as August 5th?
Yeah, we.
Okay. And I think the other advantage to the council is, once you approve it, you're gonna lock the ceiling of interest rates. So if interest rates drop, then we can take advantage of them. But if interest rates rise and you have it locked, then we could be vulnerable to higher interest rates. So I do think there's some urgency around this. If you'd like to see the draft agreement, though, that's great.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we have a great, and, and, you know, to Counselor Windlin's point, we have a great team on this, all of you, city manager, the legal team, you know, full, full faith, just for us, kind of due diligence as we're signing off on something to not even.
Well, it's a brand new program to the city, so I understand your desire to need to see the terms, right? Unlike revenue bonds or, or geo bonds where we've done it before, you know what that means. This is all new. So I understand. I just think that we do have some, some concern about doing this expeditiously so that we don't lose this option altogether.
Counselor Afghan?
Mr. Mayor and City Manager Bennett, I was not suggesting sending out the draft contract with the 500 pages and those kind of things. I was just suggesting a one page with high level bullets. This is the interest rate. This is the duration. If we break the contract, it's going to be no penalty or with penalty. So at that level, we understand what we're committing to. So when we're talking about $123 million dollar line of credit slash loan, I think we should do that high level of terms and conditions.
Will that satisfy you, your mayor, your own?
I'm sorry, what was it?
He, he's suggesting just sort of essentially a term sheet as opposed to the actual agreement.
If you guys wanna read that, more power to you, but that's why we have.
I'd say give us what you have, and, but please provide a summary.
Exactly.
Give it, you know.
And what would be helpful, I think, for the public and for us is to have the two scenarios that if we did go just with rates versus WFIU, to show the comparative analysis to say this is what we'll be saving, or this is how we can adjust the rates, the advantages of doing this loan versus something else, just so that we can easily explain it to somebody who asked me the question, so you just signed a WFIU loan. What does that mean? Put it in that, those kinds of terms. So with a 30-second elevator speech that would summarize it?
Can you pull that off by August 5th?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And thank you. That's all very helpful. Let me, so let me move to table, this, table resolution.
How about not table? How about continue to August 5th?
We'll move to continue. The consideration of Resolution 25-37 until August 5th, 2025, and ask the staff to return with the draft agreement and a summary term sheet at that time.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. And did Counselor Corrigan, motion passes to six zero? Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, next, we have item 7.2. These are two ordinances, ordinance 2958 and 2961, that we enacted at our July 1st meeting. And we now need to reconsider them and place them on the August 5th agenda for potential amendment. And so just procedurally, we have a couple of things to do here. For each ordinance, we're going to make two motions. One is going to be to reconsider the ordinance, and then one is going to be to set the item for that August 5th meeting. And so we're gonna take up each ordinance separately for a, a, a clear record. So starting with ordinance 2958, I'm going to move to reconsider our July 1st, 2025 vote, enacting ordinance 2958.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, any Counselor Corrigan? Okay, motion passes six zero. And I'll move to tentatively approve ordinance 2958 and direct staff to return on August 5th for potential amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so sorry, motion's been made by the mayor and seconded by Counselor Raff. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes six zero. Now for ordinance 2961, I'll move to reconsider our July 1st, 2025 vote, enacting ordinance 2961.
Second.
All right, motion made by the mayor, seconded by Counselor Verdict. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes six zero. And I'll move to tentatively approve ordinance 2961 and direct staff to return on August 5th for potential amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion's made by the mayor, seconded by Counselor Verdict. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes six zero. Okay, thank you. I'll set on that. And now for two study sessions. The first is on affair, housing policy and education. Have Mr. Olson, our long-range planning manager, Ms. Reuter?
Good afternoon to you both. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Yes, and as you just pointed out, we are here to conduct a study session on affirmatively furthering fair housing, as well as just generally about our fair housing policy and education strategy within our housing production strategy and how to move forward with some comprehensive plan amendments related to that work. So just wanted to mention that we're here for sort of two purposes. Shail will get going with a presentation, and of course, we should introduce her. We're very, very lucky to be joined here today by Shail Ruder from the Fair Housing Council of Oregon, who is going to provide you with an overview on affirmatively furthering fair housing. And after that, I will follow up with you with some more direct questions about some comprehensive plan amendments and some direction on those to move forward with our strategy.
Wonderful. Well, thank you. I'm so glad to be here talking to you. It's my second city council meeting in a week. I was in Salem yesterday for theirs, talking about similar topics as well. So we're going to talk about today AFFH and how to build an inclusive community. AFFH, of course, is affirmatively furthering fair housing. My name is Shail Ruder. I'm the Education Outreach Director at the Fair Housing Council of Oregon. I use she, her, hers pronouns. I have been there for nine years, but I've actually taught about fair housing law since about 2002. With that said, I am not an attorney. I cannot give legal advice, so I just want that said. So the Fair Housing Council of Oregon, we are a statewide civil rights organization, and we really focus in on civil rights specific to housing. And what is fair housing? So fair housing is the right of all people to be free from discrimination in the rental sale or financing of housing. When I use the term discrimination in this presentation, it has a very specific definition underneath the Fair Housing Act. And that means treating a person differently in any housing transaction because that person is a member of a protected class, so because of their protected identity. We have several different levels of protected classes. We have federal levels of protected classes, state levels of protected classes, and then some local jurisdictions will add additional protections as well. So on a federal level, we have race, color, religion, and national origin. Those were the first four protected classes that were added in 1968, when the Civil Rights Act passed. The Civil Rights, or the Fair Housing Act passed. The Fair Housing Act was actually the most difficult piece of civil rights legislation to pass in the 1960s. It was more difficult than the Voting Rights Act of 65, and even more difficult than the Civil Rights Act of 64. So in 1964, fair housing was supposed to be included in that Civil Rights Act, but it was found very quickly that people who were sympathetic towards the idea of integration were not sympathetic towards that idea when it extended to neighborhoods and where people lived. So housing actually had to be removed from the Civil Rights Act of 64, or it never would have passed. The Fair Housing Act then floundered in committee for another four years until the assassination of Dr. King, April 4th of 1968. There were riots in over 125 cities, which then created political pressure to actually pass the Fair Housing Act. So then, fast forward to 1974, women's movement had been going on for several decades, and so then we see sex being added as a federally protected class. In 1988, we see families with children being added and also disability added. The independent living movement had been going on for several decades at that point as well. People were moving outside of institutional settings, finding that they didn't have equal access to housing choice in the community. Now, to go back to that definition of discrimination, for something to be illegal based on fair housing, it has to be different treatment based on a protected class. Some of us may remember that prior to 1988, we might see a lot of signs for rentals that said, and advertisements that said, no kids, right? No pets, no kids. We would see that a lot. Prior to 1988, in the state of Oregon, nearly 70% of landlords did not rent to families that had kids. So imagine how hard it is to find safe, stable, affordable housing if nearly 70% of the rental market is off limits. So that type of discrimination didn't become illegal then until 1988, when that becomes a protected class on the federal level. Now, Oregon State adds additional protected classes. We have marital status, source of income. This means housing subsidies, housing choice vouchers, Section 8 vouchers, shelter plus care vouchers, agency rent payments. Those are all protected, so a housing provider can't say, I will not rent to somebody because they have that type of a benefit. TANF, SSI, SSD are not expressly listed in the law, but the legislative intent was to include them, so cases have settled on behalf of people who have been discriminated against because of receiving those public benefits. Also, sexual orientation, gender identity is protected in the state of Oregon. And then sometimes local jurisdictions will add additional protected classes. Now, Lake Oswego, Clackamas County is not, you know, one of those jurisdictions. Multnomah County, for example, adds age over 18 and occupation, as does Salem. Salem also adds domestic partnership and also housing status as protected classes. So we see those shift throughout the state. Now, we want to talk a little bit about the history of residential segregation that we see in Oregon, so we're going to talk about the history of displacement, discrimination, and segregation. It really helps us to understand some of what we see around racial and national origin makeup in the state of Oregon specifically. So, you know, Oregon often is talked about in history books as being sort of part of the Wild West, or it was, you know, viewed as this untapped agricultural resource, this gold mine, because literally there were gold mines that were here. There was gold in the Oregon Territory. But really, the white settlement of Oregon Territory relied heavily on the decimation of, of the native population that was here. Because of white settlement, 80% of the indigenous population was decimated. Those who remained were forced onto reservations, and part of the reason that that number, 80%, is so high is that when people were forced to live in close proximity away from their natural lands, disease spreads more quickly, right? That seems very pertinent as, you know, we're coming out of COVID where we saw disease spread more quickly when people were in close concentration to one another. Many of us in school learned about the Oregon Trail, but one of the things that we didn't learn was that the Oregon Trail was actually for white settlers only. So for the Donation Land Claim Act in 1850, that gave settlers, white male settlers, 320 acres, and if the man was married, he would get 640 acres. Now, if we look at the value of an acre of farmland today, that subsidy is more than $2 million of what people got for coming and settling here in the Oregon Territory. The state constitution in 1859 prevented African Americans, whether they were enslaved or free, from coming to the state of Oregon. Now, there was a very hotly contested debate about would Oregon Territory, would Oregon as a state allow the institution of slavery? And the decision was no, and it wasn't because it was morally the right decision, it was because there was this belief that slavery created unfair work competition, and it lowered wages for other people. So the decision was purely economic. But then the other decision that was made was then African American people would also not be allowed to move here or live here. That was ultimately nullified from our constitution in 1927, but it wasn't removed. The language wasn't removed until 2002, not that long ago. Also, the constitution barred Chinese from owning property or mining claims, and that was nullified in 1943, when the Chinese were our allies in World War II. So harassment and displacement also come into this story. So there were laws that limited, but did not prevent African Americans and new immigrants from coming to Oregon, and specifically, they were coming to Oregon because there were a boom in certain industries that needed people to do manual labor, very difficult, sometimes very dangerous, manual labor. Working in the timber industry, mining industry, agriculture, and fisheries led to stable communities forming across the state. But minority communities were often scapegoated during recessions and then driven out of where they lived by violence, intimidation, and also sundown laws. So sundown laws said that people had to be out of town, people of color specifically, had to be out of town by the time that the sun went down, or they could be arrested or experience frightening acts of hate and harassment. Now, those laws were supposed to be out of practice by 64, when the Civil Rights Act passed, but we know of two jurisdictions in Oregon, Cottage Grove, Cape Junction, where those were still in practice until the early 70s. Now, I also want to draw your attention to this picture on the bottom left of the slide. That's a picture of schoolchildren. This is a picture of Little Central School for African Americans. So between 1867 and 1871, there was an African American school that was located in Salem, but it closed soon thereafter. In fact, so this is a quote from around that time. "By 1936, the black population of Salem virtually had disappeared. As a local NAACP observed, Salem has no Negro population except a few inmates in the penal institution and insane hospital. All of the colored people who did live here have all moved to Los Angeles. I know of no Negroes living in Salem at the present time." And just in acknowledgement that, yes, that language is antiquated, but it is a quote from the past that demonstrates, demonstrates the time. So while there's little research into the drastic change in demographic, it's simple to assume that restrictive practices and harassment most likely worked to push out African American residents. So I also want to bring forward this, this list that was created by the American Institute of Real Estate Appraisers, and it literally ranked who was most valuable for neighborhoods. So based on national origin, certain neighborhoods, certain properties were then considered to be more valuable. Those at the top are more valuable, the ones at the bottom were considered least valuable in terms of real estate appraisals. Notice indigenous people don't even make this list. I would also like to point out northern Italians are ranked much higher than southern Italians. They come from the same area of the world. However, northern Italians are lighter complected than southern Italians. Therefore, they were considered more valuable for neighborhood value. We're going to come back to this list in just a little bit. Also, it was regular practice to have restrictive covenants written into the deeds of homes, which said who could live in homes and who could not live in homes. And what these covenants did is they prevented the owner of the real estate to sell or transfer the property to non-whites. There was also written into the Realtor Code of Ethics that if a real estate agent sold a home in an all-white neighborhood to a person of color, that they would lose their real estate license. So we're seeing a lot of different levels of systems that are basically rigged, right? Written in a very discriminatory intentional way. Now, the Supreme Court declared restrictive covenants unenforceable in the case Shelley versus Kramer that came out in 1948. But while they were legally unenforceable, there was no entity to actually enforce the fact that they were unenforceable. So it became more of a private contract matter. Now, interestingly enough, I know that Lake Oswego actually was a community that was governed by these restrictive covenants for a long time, and when we look up the racial makeup of Lake Oswego, it is 1.1% black, when the national average is 12% black Americans. Oregon in general is also very low. It's at 2% to 3%. So Lake Oswego is lower than that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Does that count towards my 30 minutes, Eric?
So, agree, like, the restricted covenants in Lake Oswego are the same, because I noticed that when we bought our house here, we had a house, our first house we bought in Beaverton, and that also had restrictive covenants.
Yes.
Was Beaverton also one of those communities?
Yeah. Beaverton, Hillsdale, Palatine Hill, Laurelhurst community.
But there are a lot of communities in Oregon.
There are a lot of communities around Oregon, which is really part of the mechanism for maintaining that segregation. Yeah, for maintaining us to be really designed to be a white state. Yeah.
Okay. And maybe a good follow-up. Has there been any work in, in the state of Oregon to have these restricted covenants removed from the deeds and whatever you call the?
Oh, yeah, there's, there's been some work by a woman named, oh, Ingrid, and I cannot remember her last name, but to make it easier to actually remove that language out of these problems.
Obviously, they don't have any impact, but, I mean, for people reading them, obviously has an impact, right?
Please.
I actually think some of our own residents have been very active in that.
Yes, they passed that.
Elizabeth Zeller and her husband Garrick were very active.
Easy to do?
I think it's still, I mean, it still is a process. You have to go to the county and apply. It's not easy, but it's not, it's not as challenging as it used to be.
It costs money for a homeowner to do that? It should be free, in my opinion, but. I'm not sure about.
No, let us get that answer free.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to derail, but just, those are things that.
No, it's a great question. You know, I think about that sort of in, in, you know, terms of, for example, Oregon adds additional protections for folks that are LGBTQIA+, right? So on the federal level, when we see a court decision being reinterpreted by the federal government, and there likely are not those protections on the federal level anymore, it's important that we have those protections here. In that same line of thinking, like, it's important to remove that language, because what if there are protections that shift or change? There's a different Supreme Court case that says those are now legally enforceable. It's important to remove them out of deeds of homes, right? In worst-case scenario planning.
Thank you.
That's my personal view. All right. So let's talk about FHA loans. So the creation of the Federal Housing Administration really opened the door to homeownership in a way that the country hadn't seen before its creation. Before the FHA, people had to put 50% down on their home, and then they had five to 10 years to pay off the balance of their home. With the creation of the FHA, we see loan structures then created, which are still in place today. People put 20% down on their home, and they have 20, 20 to 30 years to pay off a fixed-rate mortgage, right? We still see that today. But the way that the FHA distributed those loans were based on that real estate appraisers' list, as far as who was most valuable and who was least valuable. So that's who would get those loans. So between 1934 and 1962, of the $120 billion in loans, $120 billion, less than 2% went to non-whites. Also, another fact to throw in there is that the GI Bill, the Home Loan Program, through the GI Bill, was distributed in exactly the same way, using the exact same list. So GIs of color who had been serving our country could not take advantage of that program when they absolutely were entitled to do so. So zoning fosters segregation. So from the start, zoning has separated more than just land uses. It is already, it has also separated people. So in the early 20th century, many communities explicitly used zoning ordinances to racially segregate neighborhoods, and that was ended by the case Buchanan versus Worley in 1917. Regulations on the form and function of buildings then locked in segregation, and that was upheld in the court case Village of Euclid versus Ambler Realty Company in 1926. So fast forward to 1968, then, we see the Fair Housing Act being signed into law by Lyndon B. Johnson, and then HUD is named as the entity to enforce fair housing law. Also, there are penalties instituted for violations of the Fair Housing Act, and this also created affirmatively furthering fair housing requirements, AFFH requirements. So AFFH, "All executive departments and agencies shall administer their programs and activities relating to housing and urban development, including any federal agency having regulatory or supervisory authority over financial institutions in a manner affirmatively further, in a manner affirmatively to further the purposes of the purposes of this subchapter, and shall cooperate with the secretary to further such purposes." So a point that I want to bring home is that racial segregation did not happen organically. It was really the result of decades of violence, intimidation, and prejudice, and then it was cemented by institutional actions. So it's important to learn the specific history of your area and then press for institutional actions to redress that harm. So let's now talk about jurisdictions and affirmatively furthering fair housing. So fair housing law prohibits land use regulations, restrictive covenants, and conditional or special use permits that may limit housing choice based on protected class. So then, what does it look like to limit housing choice based on protected class? It could be requiring projects to undergo additional approval steps, hearings, or meetings with neighbors not required of other housing projects. So, for example, it could be a city requiring an applicant seeking to build a single-unit house for five unrelated people with disabilities, like an adult foster care home, to undergo additional hearings, reviews, or community meetings that are not required for a single-unit house for any other group of non, five non-related people. The takeaway is that all new housing developments should be held to the same standards, and cities shouldn't be creating more barriers to developing needed housing types. Also, it could be requiring projects to have extra screening setbacks or other design modifications not required of other housing projects. So another example of this could be requiring an affordable housing development to have more landscaping requirements and higher design standard policies than other new developments to ensure that the affordable housing fits in with the existing characteristics of the neighborhood. So remember, all new housing should be held to the same standards, no matter who will live there. The takeaway is that housing types shouldn't have to jump through additional hoops or come against additional barriers. They shouldn't be, or they should be held to the same standards as all new housing developments. It could also be requiring burdensome public safety requirements. So, for example, let's say that it's a transitional living home that's maybe for people who are recovering from substance abuse disorder, and there is a requirement then that they have a security guard on site. Would there be a requirement for a security guard of any other transitional housing program with a different type of group of people there? The answer is likely no. So is this requirement then based on the assumption of the protected-class people who are going to live there? And if the answer is yes, it is likely problematic under the Fair Housing Act. It could also be refusing to provide reasonable accommodations to land use or zoning policies when such accommodations may be necessary to allow persons with disabilities to have an equal opportunity to use and enjoy the housing. So, for example, it could be, it could be denying a request to modify a setback requirement so an accessible sidewalk or ramp can be provided for one or more persons with mobility disabilities. So I want to talk now about a. So, I want to talk now about a concept called disparate impact. In general, this concept means that there is some type of a policy, rule, or procedure that, when it is applied, has a disproportionate negative impact on one protected class more so than others. So, the definition, the HUD rule, "A practice that results in a disparate impact on a group of persons or creates, increases, reinforces, or perpetuates segregated housing patterns because of race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, or national origin," so those nationally-protected classes. So, policies that could have a disparate impact, urban renewal, code enforcement, exclusionary zoning, residency preference policies. There's the example out of North Portland when they created the right-to-return policy for people who had been displaced from North and Northeast Portland. Originally, it had been written as a racial preference, but it wasn't legal because of who gets left out. So, it was rewritten, then, to be a preference for people who had historical ties to the neighborhood, which then didn't discriminate based on race. Another example could be a local zoning ordinance that restricts housing with more than three bedrooms. That would be a disparate impact on people with larger families, AKA familial status. So, I want to talk about this case, because this is the case that really put disparate impact on the map. So, the use of disparate impact was affirmed by the Supreme Court in a 2015 ruling in Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs versus Inclusive Communities Project. The court made it clear that disparate impact claims must remain viable in order to fulfill, in quotes, "the Fair Housing Act's continuing role in moving the nation towards a more integrated society," end quote. In that case, a nonprofit took the local housing authority to court, because they were only building affordable housing projects in areas that were already segregated, and they weren't spreading the housing around to create more integrated housing. So, in those communities where housing was being built, it was 92.29% of low-income tax credit units in the city of Dallas were located in census tracts with less than 50% Caucasian residents. So, this disparately impacted families of color, because they were blocked from neighborhoods with more economic opportunities. The city was then perpetuating segregated housing patterns. So, again, location is so important when we're building new affordable housing. Now, I want to give you a closer-to-home example of this. So, this is from the Salem-Kaiser Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing in 2019. The map on the left-hand side shows the Low Poverty Index. So, basically, the darker blue portions of this map is a higher concentration of people who are least likely to be exposed to poverty, or they're less likely to be exposed to poverty. On the right-hand side, the darker blue areas are schools that perform the best in Salem. This next map, on the left-hand side, the darker blue areas are people, you know, the concentration of people who are more gainfully employed. On the right-hand side, the darker blue areas are people who are less likely to be exposed to environmental toxins. The gray areas in that map on the right-hand side means that they didn't have any data. Now, what I'm going to show you next is a map that shows you the concentration of where the Latinx community is most highly concentrated, in Salem and Kaiser. So, you see, it's in those areas of least economic opportunity. So, AFFH means that where housing is located is as important as how much housing there is. So, it's important to push for good analysis to unearth existing patterns of segregation, and then make investments that disrupt, intentionally disrupt, those patterns. So, let's talk about Goal 10 and fair housing. So, the state of Oregon identified 14 state planning goals back in the 60s and 70s with passing of Senate Bill 10 and Senate Bill 100. Goal 10 was identified to provide for the housing needs of the citizens of the state. Goal 10 states, "Buildable lands for residential use shall be inventoried, and plans shall encourage the availability of adequate numbers of needed housing units at price ranges and rent levels, which are commensurate with the financial capabilities of Oregon households, and allow for flexibility of housing location, type, and also density." For cities with populations larger than 2,500 residents, it also means including a broader range of housing types when they decide what needed housing units should be planned for in the community. This means that communities must look beyond single-family detached housing and include multi-housing units, manufactured homes, renter-occupied units, and other forms of housing. So, again, how does this relate to fair housing? The connection is that more people who are members of protected classes live in these needed types of housing, like those that I had just mentioned. So, let's talk about housing needs analysis. A housing needs analysis is one of the components a city needs to consider to satisfy the housing needs of its residents over a 20-year period. A housing needs analysis is both a product and a process that a city goes through to determine areas of need in their current inventory of housing and their buildable land supply. So, because the comprehensive planning process in Oregon is based on cities having a 20-year supply of land, the housing needs analysis is needed to determine if the city is satisfying this need. If the city has a deficit of housing supply for the next 20 years, the city must either expand its urban growth boundary, increase the amount of allowed housing development on lands already within the urban growth boundary, or combine these two alternatives. So, cities also need to go beyond top-line housing need and look at who has been underserved by the current housing environment. The next step required of all Oregon cities with over 10,000 people, then, is the housing production strategy. The housing production strategy must address the needs identified in the housing needs analysis and result in fair, must result in fair and equitable housing outcomes. So, Goal 10 means that producing adequate quantities and types of housing which meet the actual needs of current and future residents should be central to every land use decision that a jurisdiction makes. The big takeaway here is that Goal 10 weaves in the idea of housing affordability for all residents. Goal 10 does this through requiring that the housing needs analysis considers the income levels of residents in the area while planning for future needed housing. In order to do that, cities will need to plan to build housing for renters of different income levels and homeowners of different income levels. Cities with populations larger than 2,500 must include a broader range of housing types. Needed housing units should be planned for in the community. This means they must look beyond single-family detached housing and include renter-occupied units, like multi-unit housing, government-assisted housing, mobile home parks, manufactured homes, and also farmworker housing. So, if cities and counties must plan for needed housing, why is there an affordable housing crisis in Oregon? There can be many barriers to developing needed housing types. So, in Oregon's current housing crisis, according to Street Roots, while rent for a one-bedroom apartment in the Portland area has risen 34% in the past year, available housing and transitional or emergent alternatives, then, have shrunk. Oregon's regional housing needs analysis found that the state currently lacks 140,000 units necessary to meet current population housing needs, and it estimates that Oregon will need to generate about 580,000 more units over the next 20 years. As a result of this, there is massive underproduction. Oregon now faces an affordability housing crisis. Nearly half of all Oregonians spend at least 30% of their income on rent, which places them below federal standards for affordability. It can also be extremely difficult to find funds to build. Finding available land, like we talked about, cities may need to expand their urban growth boundaries to make room or allow for different types of housing. Cities have to update also infrastructure, like sewage, like power grids, to allow for these new housing developments, and that costs money. But perhaps one of the biggest barriers to the development of needed housing types is NIMBYism, which stands for "not in my backyard." I just want to let you know, I also brought a bunch of really great resource materials for how to combat NIMBYism also, that really envelops a lot of this presentation, and that will all be in your mailbox after the presentation. So, let's talk about free speech and public decisions. So, some of the rhetoric that we will hear used when we talk about building more inclusive types of housing might be, "It'll bring more crime, it'll attract more homeless people, it'll make our city look like we have a bunch of zombies," really referring to people who might be struggling with substance abuse disorders. But these are all myths. Predominantly, the people who are unhoused in a particular area actually lived there prior to becoming unhoused. Most homelessness, especially in rural areas, is also invisible. Some of it's invisible, but much of it is invisible. Community members have the right, under First Amendment free speech protections, to express their opposition to projects on any basis, as long as it does not constitute illegal intimidation. Illegal intimidation is intentional behavior that would cause a person of ordinary sensibilities to fear injury or harm. However, land use and other public decisions may not be made on the basis of concerns based upon discriminatory assumptions. So, local officials, including staff, may only make their decisions based on fact-based nondiscriminatory factors. The law prohibits the public from asking for information about the extent or type of disability an individual or a group of individuals may have. The big takeaway here is that the public can, and often do, make discriminatory statements during public hearings based on fears about who will live in proposed housing developments. It's their right to show up and speak their mind. However, the city government cannot block housing opportunity for protected classes, for protected-class citizens based on those discriminatory statements that are made. Fair housing law prohibits public decisions and policies that have disproportionate impact on members of one or more protected classes. So, for example, we know of one city that tried to create a city ordinance that stated any dwelling above a business was only allowed to be single occupancy only. And this was a decision that they had tried to make to minimize noise for those businesses. However, that ordinance disproportionately impacts families with children, because then they are blocked from living there. So, the city then had to change their ordinance to comply with fair housing law. So, it is important to help resistant community members to understand how new housing will help meet the needs of the whole community, including neighbors that they might not know exist. But also, remind policymakers that prejudicial comments from the public are not adequate reasons to reject a project. So, just, we want you to know that we are here to help, we are here to be a resource. Again, we cannot give legal advice, we're not attorneys, but things that we can do is that we can help to look at code and zoning changes through a fair housing lens, we can help to identify discrimination, we can provide education, such as this, and then we can also provide technical assistance, we can provide lots of fair housing materials, we have so many educational materials, and I love to share them. Also, we can provide advocacy and enforcement services as well. And with that, I'm going to pass the baton over to Eric.
Thank you, Shile. I really appreciate your presentation. You know, obviously, this is not completely new to our city council. We've been talking about these housing issues, particularly with respect to the housing production strategy and housing needs analysis at the city council for several years now, having adopted our HPS last year. However, it's really important to see that in the larger context of federal law, state law, how that connects to fair housing as well, because those commitments we made in the HPS are also our commitments to advance fair housing, or affirmatively further fair housing. So, it's an important connection to make. Another sort of connection that we felt was important to embed in that HPS as a near-term strategy to sort of, sort of, cement our commitment to fair housing within the comprehensive plan prior to moving forward with the subsequent strategies and the housing production strategy. So, with that being said, I think it might make sense to pause here for some questions for Shile before I get into my more specific direction that I'm looking for from you today.
Okay.
So, yeah, I guess if that's all right, if any of you have any questions for Shile about that presentation, it'd be a great time.
Alex, questions? Council Afghans?
I don't have any questions, but I have a comment. Thank you very much. I'm catching my breath, listening to you, so much information, and you were able to tie all the dots together, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had given her a strict time limit, and so, I think she was trying to abide by that, but I, yeah, I really appreciate your...
And you think she went over, it was going to come off your limit anyway, so. The, I also really appreciated the presentation. I mean, some of it is information that we've gone over, but it's always critical to have. I think this information being out there is just very, very, very important. You know, when I was a kid, growing up here, this one memory really sticks with me of a Realtor couple, I was friends with their sons, anyway, telling me how other Realtors in town would not sell to black families. And that has stuck with me my whole life, and that was not, you know, ancient history. We're talking like late 80s, 90s, right? So, that, and I'm sure that wasn't like, no shade on Realtors, I mean, probably wasn't every Realtor, but that was the thing. So, even after, you know, the advent of the civil rights movement and these laws, it's still, as you're kind of pointing out with local land use, I mean, that is important, you know, to an extent, but then it's in the hands of the community. And if you have folks who are putting up barriers, if you have local governments, and then folks within the community who are still putting up barriers, which still exist, I mean, we see this, this council has seen it, then that also stands in the way of people being able to access housing. And I think there's a reason why, you know, that the demographics of the community are the way they are, and some of it goes way, way, way back, some of it does, but not all of it. Some of it is in our lifetimes, and I'm the youngest one on the dais, and some of it is definitely within my lifetime. The, so I think it's really important how you highlighted some of these, both the historical, but also the contemporary barriers that still exist, and I'm glad that we're taking these steps, you know, to rectify them. And I think it's important, too, that we communicate, you know, what, you know, because a lot of, we still hear this out in the, in the world, you know, that maybe Lake Oswego isn't as welcoming, and we think of ourselves as welcoming, of course, because we're all here, right? So, of course, we feel welcome here, because we've lived here. But for others, maybe not so much. And it's understandable, when I think back against my childhood, and if there's other kids who are maybe now adults, my age, if their parents said, "Hey, you know, Lake Oswego didn't welcome us," well, yeah, that's going to stick with them. They're going to say, "Well, gosh, it's been 20 years, you know, maybe they've changed their mind on this, I should go give that Lake Oswego another try." No, I mean, you know, so, I do think it's important that we communicate the direction that our community is going, because it has grown quite a bit, and I think the mentality of the community has changed substantially since, you know, the 70s, 80s, and whatnot. So, thank you. Questions?
Thanks, yeah, I guess, you know, just to reiterate that, that is a big piece of why we're just out here presenting this information, much of which is likely a review for you all, but just to put it out there, it never hurts to keep kind of reminding folks and just to spread this information to folks that may not be aware of it in the first place, or may not understand, for instance, you know, the state of Oregon that we have even more protections under affirmatively furthering fair housing than some other states that are designed to sort of give some insulation against federal activity that could ebb and flow related to protections on fair housing. So, I think, you know, it's important for folks to understand that's a state-level requirement as well. So, of course, we're bound to comply with this, we are required by law, both by the state and federal law, to, you know, comply with this, but it is important for folks to understand what it means, and to attempt to nicely segue to my next topic of conversation, it also helps to have policies written down in the comprehensive plan. So, you know, again, that is a big part of why we had proposed doing this in the near term, is one of the first strategies, A, it's a relatively light lift, and it's fun to get folks from the Fair Housing Council to come and talk to you all, and sort of involve them in this process, but it is something that will sort of help the city to codify and sort of really take, make a larger commitment to fair housing than we would just through compliance with the Fair Housing Act more generally, or other state housing laws. So, you know, we, as staff, took a look at, you know, some options essentially for what we could do within our comprehensive plan, to modify the comprehensive plan, amend it to include an affirmatively furthering fair housing policy. Again, this was strategy number 13 in the housing production strategy that we adopted last November, and has now been approved by the state, so it's official. And, you know, I think, you know, we looked into this a bit, I did some research on what some other cities had adopted in terms of their fair housing language, also identified that, you know, ultimately, look, we have had a lot of changes coming in from the state regarding housing, and our housing chapter, the complete neighborhoods and housing chapter of the comprehensive plan is not really up to speed with all of that. So, acknowledging the need for a larger, sort of, more comprehensive look at that chapter in the future, staff still has made a recommendation to adopt what we're calling a more surgical approach, to adopt a affirmatively furthering fair housing policy without making those substantive changes, really, for the most part, just because they're still coming down the pike. We have a lot of new legislation that is awaiting the governor's signature, even at this moment, that could really... this moment that could really impact what our housing policies look like in the future. So, acknowledging that that's still somewhat in flux, we're wanting to recommend this sort of, again, near-term approach to adopt a policy really just codifying that affirmatively furthering fair housing policy into the comprehensive plan. So, in the staff report, you likely noticed that I had included some draft language that we could include in the comprehensive plan, essentially an additional policy within the Housing Choice and Affordability section. And just to really quickly review that language, it's to employ strategies, or I guess it's kind of, you know, worded as the city will, employ strategies to affirmatively further fair housing by fostering inclusive communities, overcoming disparities in access to community amenities, and enhancing housing choice for people in protected classes. So, talking a little bit about what it means to affirmatively further fair housing without just leaving it as the city will affirmatively further fair housing, talking a little bit more about what that means, because when we go through and actually try to respond to comprehensive policies and comprehensive plan policies in the future, we'll need a little bit more direction and a little bit more specificity. But, you know, still kind of taking this more near-term approach as opposed to that sort of comprehensive revisit of the entire chapter. So, that is really what staff has proposed here with your direction. We will bring this ideally to a public hearing at the Planning Commission on September 8th. If there is other sort of direction from council, we can, of course, change course as needed.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Olson. Just, so that, each of those policies, is there any expansion on those policies within the comp plan, or is it just a policy?
That's just the policy, yeah. I mean, there's, of course, action items that are corresponding to those. You know, we have committed to adopting a policy, and these are the policies that when we go through and make a code amendment or any other type of zoning map amendment, when we amend things, we have to go through and sort of identify applicable comprehensive plan policies and show how we comply with them. So, this will be another thing that staff, when we do housing-related actions, will go through and respond to this policy and say, you know, to the extent that the proposed action complies with this, you know. For instance, you know, something like a strategy that we're required to do for the Housing Production Strategy or that we've committed to do, it would be pretty helpful, actually, to have this in there, and we could kind of talk a little bit more about how this work connects to what they're doing at the state and all the sort of new requirements related to goaltend without, you know, going too far and doing a complete overhaul of the chapter, I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Council Wenden, please.
I'm trying to comprehend everything and look at all of what you've written. How far out of compliance are we with our current policy with this new introduction of additional language, which I think is pretty vague in the sense of, it's kind of like we talked about the tree code, what's clear and objective? I don't know what's clear and objective in this other than following the laws that we currently have on the books. So, I, I'm trying to figure out why. And I, and you know what? I think it was a great history lesson, and I think it was wonderful presentation. I think 99% of what you were talking about is at the state and federal level, and I don't see us being off of the code per se unless I'm completely--
There's no compliance issue. The issue is that really we have committed through our Housing Production Strategy to adopt an affirmatively furthering fair housing policy as a comprehensive plan amendment. So, that's what we're here to talk about.
What does that mean, though?
That means to embed it as a city policy, our existing commitments and really requirements to abide by federal and state law. Of course, we can go further.
I'm doing now?
Well, it's not a policy that needs to be responded to for various different amendments and things like that. And again, that's why we had committed to it as a part of our HPS.
But can you give me five examples of something that would come across your desk in a typical month that would be effective of this policy?
Well, typically, we only look at the comprehensive plan when there are proposed amendments. So, it would be nearly every project that comes through the Long Range Planning Department would now need to respond to this policy in addition to the other applicable policies. So, we would then show and help the state assess our compliance with federal fair housing laws and state fair housing laws through responding to this policy. But ultimately, no, we're not out of compliance, but we have committed to take this additional step to show our commitment to affirmatively furthering fair housing. And as you've identified, there are very few implications in terms of what we're required to do there.
Well--
It's a very low-hanging fruit in that respect.
Yeah, I understand that, but I thought that's what we were doing already. I mean, I--
It kind of is.
What?
I mean, I think you're right there, yeah.
I mean, I really have issues. I mean, it sounds like, and I think--
You don't want the policy?
What?
Do you not want the policy?
No, I'm, that's not what I'm getting at. I'm asking, we continue to add additional verbiage of something that's already there. So, are we just compounding--
But it's not there. I think that's what it is.
Yeah, we aren't required to respond to this in terms of answering to our own city policy currently.
Well, we're, aren't we responsible for following Oregon law and federal law?
We are, yeah. And as a part of the HPS, we decided to say, hey, we're required to do this anyway. We might as well adopt it as a city policy because it's not really adding any additional steps for us.
Okay. I guess we're in very subjective fantasy land in my, as far as policy. I just, I am hoping that Lake Oswego has been following this and that if there was lots of issues, specific issues, that it would come before council to say, hey, you've got a policy issue right now. I mean, I, I don't know. I, I'm all for this. In fact, I'm, it, your history lesson brought back a lot of bad sort of, you know, history. That's the United States, that's the world. I mean, you can study any history anywhere and find out that humans are humans, and it's not exactly a great story sometimes that we have. But I just don't see this as value-added, because I feel like we're already doing this, and it should have already been, I don't know why it's not already in our comp plans that we have fair housing and that we follow the state and federal guidelines. And if we don't, I'm surprised that we don't, and why hasn't it been there? So, I guess that's--
Final, good question.
I, so, anyway, I guess if this codifies that, that's great. I guess part of it, will it change any of the expectations of what Lake Oswego residents feel is, is it going to change Lake Oswego? In other words, is something like this, what, I, it's interesting, I saw mobile homes and manufactured homes that you mentioned in your discussion. By adopting this, is it now going to say that we are going to have mobile homes and manufactured homes?
That's not what this policy is explicitly saying.
That is a new state law.
But we do have those allowed currently, so, yeah.
Those are allowed by, under state law now. It's just people don't build them.
Right.
That's correct. We already allow manufactured and mobile homes, but I, we have very, very few of them in the city, and I can't think of one that we've approved recently. It just has a lot to do, we have very high land values, so it just doesn't work out. But it's not because we aren't allowing them. We have a specific code section that has standards for them that all comply with state law. But I would just say, just to reiterate kind of or restate what Eric had said, is that these comprehensive plan policies that we have, they come into play anytime we amend our code and it affects a housing or land use regulation. We have to show how that code change is going to comply with our policies. So, you're right, we always had to comply with state law. That, that's something we've always complied with. But this specifically will call that out, and it will require us to make findings, and it will keep it top of mind and, you know, and it'll be an understanding of the community that this is a value of Lake Oswego, this is something that we support, and we will have specific findings to show how we comply. So, it just keeps it sort of top of mind. But you're right, we already currently comply with that, with state law. We don't discriminate, we don't, our policies, at least not that I'm aware of, discriminate based on a protected class.
I'm hoping not. I mean, that's, I've been around there for a long time, and I didn't think--
There are other strategies in the HPS that are kind of designed to just kind of take credit for what we're already doing. So, I think this is one of those strategies where we'd like to take credit for that, you know, if there is a desire to, you know, dissect this language a little bit more or make it more specific in terms of, all right, so we want to foster inclusive communities, what does that mean? Do we want to come up with specific criteria for what that means under this policy? That, that could become a little bit more impactful in terms of what we can say about proposed amendments and things like that. That would theoretically limit us more, you know, by having this language as it currently exists. I mean, it's, it's not a development standard, it's not a zoning standard. A lot of times, policy language is a little bit more aspirational in some ways, and it does help us as planners to be able to respond to things like that. You know, in this, in this instance, it would be, I think, sometimes a lot harder unless we developed a whole, you know, new program about how exactly we're going to implement this. You know, that would be a lot more sort of burden for staff to go through and sort of check all this sort of individual boxes, as we already know also that, you know, the HNA and the HPS are directly supposed to get us at this compliance with fair housing law on the state level. So, we're already doing a ton of stuff that we are checking all those boxes for as well. So, we don't necessarily want to add a lot more, and, you know, we want to, instead of, you know, maybe just having it as a comprehensive plan policy, really ensure that what we do adopt embeds those values in more specific ways, if that makes sense. So, this is a policy that can guide us, but when we adopt more tangible amendments or policies or programs to fulfill the HPS, those are where we get into those more specific sort of clear and objective items, as you're referring to.
Okay. And so, from the economic standpoint, there was a number of comments made about housing that would be of all different levels. We're kind of a free market here. I mean, so, I mean, what does that mean? Does that mean that we're only going to approve houses that are within a band of so much money because that, that fulfills our--
Well, as you're aware, we have the need for all different income levels of housing.
Oh, we have the need, oh.
Yeah, so, we're responding to the needs that are identified in the Housing Needs Analysis. So, we develop zoning, recommend strategies to address those needs that, you know, are designed to accomplish what you're, what you're saying. It's not necessarily like a house-by-house basis.
You also have adopted policies to try, I mean, my recollection of the Housing Needs Analysis says we need 2,000 units and a third of them at low-income levels, a third of them at middle-income levels, and a third of them at upper-income levels. And you've adopted policies to incentivize the construction of affordable housing in the community, like SDC waivers.
Right.
So, you don't necessarily approve it on a project-by-project basis, you approve it at the policy level.
Right. And as we, was covered in the report, affordable housing and fair housing, there's overlap, but they're two different, these are two different topics. I, this is a good discussion, I want to keep us moving along, though. Council Afghan, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I was listening to your presentation, I started being defensive. It's like, was she telling me about Lake Oswego? What are we not doing? What are we doing that's wrong? And I went through that process until I was able to say, okay, wait a minute, we're just taking a FHA 101 right now. We're just listening to see the bigger picture. And what was going through my mind at the time that there are a lot of people out there who dismiss the systematic discrimination that we have had in our past. This just bubbled it to the surface for me again, and now you have presented facts that this is how the discrimination has happened. I went back to, again, listening to your presentation about the mobile home and the trailer home, and I go, wait a minute, we don't even have space for food carts that we're struggling with right now. How do I, then I had to pull myself back again and say, they're not suggesting anything, they're just talking about the landscape, the bigger picture. So, I first have a question for you. With the information that you have heard from Mr. Olson, where does that put Lake Oswego relative to the other cities around us or in Oregon?
Oh, that's a really good question. You know, I think one of the things that was said, one of the biggest challenges that Lake Oswego has in creating inclusive community is the value of the land itself. That becomes, I think, one of the most challenging barriers to overcome. You know, where do you put affordable housing units that are going to house those people in the Housing Needs Analysis, you know, when you are looking at how much it will cost a developer to come in to actually build those types of housing? How Lake Oswego compares to other jurisdictions? I, I can't comment on that because I just didn't do that research, the comparative research before I came.
I didn't give her the full spiel on everything we're doing here and trying to sell all of our benefits here, but I, I'm happy to. I, you know, I don't want to take, I don't want to say anything out of place here, but I, you know, I think the state has not had many issues with what we've been submitting for the HNA and HPS and other cities have.
I actually think we have done a lot more than other cities around us, but we're not getting the credit or the acknowledgement of all this stuff we have been doing. Having said that, again, I wasn't sure if we're talking about policy or commitment. Are we talking about, okay, let's put this over here and we're declaring our commitment? Or is this really a policy? If it's a policy, what does that mean? So, similar questions, but this is what I know. Every single city councilor that I have interacted with, they are committed to squashing discrimination, racism, across the board. So, for me, what you're putting on the table here is a leadership and announcing and declaring our intention. And I want that because I want to cut ties with the history of us, and I want to make sure everybody across the country knows that we are not who we were 40 years ago or 100 years ago. And this takes us to the next level, declaring our commitment with the policy that may not have an immediate action item, but it will capture every opportunity in the future that we can go that direction. So, for me, this is a leadership showing our values drives the policy, and the policy in the future will drive code modification that will get us there, but not tomorrow morning. And we're doing a lot of other stuff that we have to bubble up and start talking about it so people know that in Lake Oswego, we're actually leading some of these efforts. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council Afghan. Council Af--
Yeah. First, before I go off on my rant here, which is very in line with what you were saying, so I'm glad you said it, it's where you were going, and I think it bears another acknowledgement. So, firstly, I am a, my family was one of these families that got a Pioneer Land Grant many years ago in Raleigh Hills. So, I personally benefited from these horrible racist policies. So, I'm going to acknowledge that. However, what I will say is, Lake Oswego has a marketing problem. I've always said this. We have a marketing problem. As long as people continue to say that Lake Oswego was racist, Lake Oswego is not a welcoming community, it continues to--
Perpetuate.
--perpetuate the narrative that we all acknowledge doesn't really exist anymore. It's historic. And as long as we continue to talk about it, it gives the people that want to believe that more ways to weaponize that narrative. And exactly what you said, we are all so committed to changing the perception of Lake Oswego, but it keeps popping up of, Lake Oswego's racist, Lake Oswego has, you know, these policies that, you know. And so, I love the history lesson. I acknowledge that we need to continue doing what we're doing, but we need to move in a way that doesn't continue, continue to weaponize the historic narrative of Lake Oswego. My question earlier of, hey, the racist covenants, did they happen in other states? That was more of a pointed question of like, yeah, we all know it happened in Lake Oswego, but it also happened all over Oregon. So, let's stop pointing out only Lake Oswego for having these issues. And so, I think we need to also, it's our responsibility as community members, city leaders, to try to, like, I don't want to say stop talking about it because that's not appropriate, but we need to acknowledge all the amazing work this city has done in the last 50 years, and also stop continuing the narrative, and let's try to figure out a way to-- a way to remove those words from the people that want to continue to weaponize them and move forward. And I know racist Lake Oswego sells a lot of headlines and sells papers, everybody loves to like jump on that, but we all know in this room that that's not true, and we just need to try to figure out a way to get, the way we talk about it, we have to talk about it differently so we can start removing that language from our history and removing that language from just the narrative in Lake Oswego. So a little bit of ramble, I apologize, but I think hopefully my point got across, so thank you.
You know, something that I think about, we do this bus tour, I don't know if anybody's been able to be on the Fair Housing Council bus tour, we basically take people through the city of Portland on a four-hour tour, not quite like Gilligan's Island, but a four-hour tour, and we stop at different spaces in real time, and we talk about those histories there, and we talk about the entire state of Oregon, we talk about this area, we talk about federal policy, and one of the questions that we ask on that bus tour is what, because we talk about what policies were put into place 50 years ago, or more than that, that still impact today. And then one of the questions we ask is, what policies are we putting in place today that we will be talking about on a bus tour 50 years from now? And so I think that a lot of what you are talking about here is, how do you create policy then that 50 years from now, people will say, yeah, Lake Oswego had that history, but made intentional decisions and actions to change how they, right?
But we've been doing that.
Right.
And we have, and so I would like us to start talking more about the things we've done and the successes we've had, instead of, instead of what we need to continue to, what more we need to do. Like, I kind of want to celebrate the great stuff and the progressiveness of our city, and I don't think we're celebrating enough.
I don't think they're exclusive, and we can do both of them. We can celebrate what we have done.
But my point is, the more we talk about the additional things we need to do, I feel it just continues to weaponize that narrative that we're trying to get away from. And so I just want to be, I just want to acknowledge the great that we've done while also talking about the additional things we need to do, but we don't celebrate enough. We don't celebrate the progressiveness that we've done.
Ken, I think we hear your point. One of the questions I had was, you know, in addition to the, to the policy, you know, item, just looking in the comp, in the comp plan, you know, the housing section, I mean, do we not want to update the narrative a bit, you know, not the, but, you know, we have like, because we have the new HNA, now the housing production strategy, it just seemed, reading it seemed like really out of date.
Absolutely, yeah, I think we definitely will eventually need to do that.
And is that, but is that not something that we could, because that doesn't seem impacted by state decisions?
But that's a much bigger process to start. You know, because you were, you were here when the comp plan was updated in 2012 and 2013, and that you know and are aware of the huge amount of community engagement. So I would say if you want to go through and really update all that narrative, you're going to need a much bigger process. I think what Eric is recommending is a very surgical change to the comp plan to make sure that we're articulating the values that you're trying to articulate without, and I, let me, let me say it a different way, we have a lot of other big long-range planning projects on our docket right now from foothill, which may actually yield a more profound result in terms of the ability to supply housing to the community. And so I think he's recommending a level of effort decision here. I absolutely agree with you. Part of the reason this needs to be done is that the comp plan was adopted in a different time, right? And the situation that presented in 2012 and 2013 is very different than today, but I think if you want to do that, we're going to have to give you a much bigger process. And I would say let's not do that until we have to.
So we're in like an all-or-nothing, so we're just doing like a little Botox thing here.
We're doing a little surgical, yes.
One treatment, one treatment.
Yeah, no, we are, we are, no, I'm actually being dead serious, we are recommending the action that complies with your housing production strategy and not a larger effort at this time, knowing about all of the other major long-range planning projects you have on your docket.
And in terms of just state legislation that could impact this, I would say, you know, I pointed out in the staff memo, the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis, the statewide Housing Needs Analysis framework is going to be vastly different than what we did for our last Housing Needs Analysis, and it will change a lot about what we're required to respond to. So we could do that big overarching sort of overhaul, and then we're going to have to come back again, not just to revisit our housing production strategy and our Housing Needs Analysis, but to revisit the comprehensive plan that we had just gone through and done a pretty big overhaul of to reflect, you know, constantly changing state policy. So it's not the most efficient use of staff time and was considered when we tried to think about the larger HPS work program.
And let me be clear, it's not just staff time, it's also community energy and time. So I think it's a question right now for us of recommending what you want to focus on as a, as a community as well as a city organization.
Counselor Verdick.
So thank you for your presentation, and I just kind of want to comment a little bit to some of my colleagues, and I think I want to start, I think it's important that we, and I think we've done this to a point, but really acknowledge our past and say, yes, this is our history, this is our past, it might not be something we're proud of, but acknowledge that it happened instead of just trying to ignore it. So I think that's really important that we do that, not just as a city but as a state, because I agree, you know, sometimes it does feel like everyone's like, it's just like Oswego who's done this. Well, it's our state that has done it, but we cannot ignore that we were also part of that, and we didn't stand up as a city and say, this isn't right either. So I think it's important that we acknowledge our history. I also think it's important that we could do a better job, and I think Counselor Raff, you're absolutely right, we needed a better job of saying, this is what we've been doing. Because I think as a city, we've done a lot of really amazing steps. We have many affordable housing units going in. We've tried to do a good job updating our codes and making it more equitable, getting more types of housing to come in, and we've seen it work. I mean, maybe could it work better? Maybe, but I think it hasn't been in place very long to really know what that's going to bring. But I do think we can do a better job of kind of celebrating what we've already accomplished. Some of it maybe because of state push, but I think also some of it's because this is what our community has said that they wanted and feels important, and I think that's also, this isn't, we're not just reacting, we're acting. And finally, then, we have to just continue, how are we going to be proactive? How are we going to, to your question, okay, in 20 years, what is going to be looked back on that we can make a difference? So I think we really need to look at it in both past, present, and future, and it's not just any one of those. And then I just, I think, Mr. Olson, you've done a really good job in kind of saying, this is a good first step without us taking staff down a rabbit hole that potentially we're going to get lost in and get redirected. So I appreciate, you know, this is a way for us to kind of do something, I think by doing it as a policy, it's making a very clear statement, because I do agree with Counselor Wenland, it sounds like, aren't we already doing this? I think the assumption was that this, aren't we already doing this? But I think by making it a policy, it's really saying, this is what we believe as a city, and it's just making it more concrete and more permanent and not something that later can, it's going to take, if it's going to go backwards.
Already articulated, frankly, but I don't know the 4 million pages of code that you guys get to go through every, every day, so.
Yeah, so.
I'm all, I'm in support of a B5. If that's, I take your recommendation, and that's, that's great. If we don't have it in there now, it should be, but it should have been.
A long time ago.
A long time ago, so.
So, just thank you both.
One thing, maybe, thank you, Counselor Verdick, they, you know, we, sometimes it's helpful to providing, you know, resources to folks. One thing I've noticed on like our website, we don't, and other cities will have like housing resources for people, how to report housing discrimination, we don't have anything like that. So I mean, maybe that's something we could undertake, it's just a little update to the website to provide some resources to people, like if they're, you know, facing eviction, you know, to direct them to the resources. I think would go a long ways, and helping again to share our story, because we've got nothing about housing on our website at all.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense, you know, I think there are various different things we can do to promote education regard to fair housing, this is the first step, this presentation and the presentation to the Planning Commission, and there's a lot that we could be doing. On the education piece, you know, I'm sure you noticed the policy or the strategy rather in the HPS is fair housing policy and education, so we had identified this for a near-term implementation, and the education piece was supposed to be a little bit more long-term. There are things that we could, of course, do quickly that would require very little process that would make a big difference, so. And I think to that, to that point, Ms. Ruder has provided us with, or will provide us with those resources after this presentation, we could also have, you know, like handouts ready to go at the counter, you know, I'm not sure exactly what the most appropriate venue to share these written handouts are, but there's other sort of easy things we can do to spread that word, yeah.
Well, thank you both very much. It sounds like everyone's on board with the very precise little recommendation as proposed, going to the Planning Commission, and I will look forward to seeing that back. And Ms. Ruder, thank you for your time tonight, it's been great to have you here, I really appreciate your presentation.
Absolutely, yeah, well, I'll be sure to note that this isn't, you know, due to some deficit, that the city is not taking on its fair housing obligations correctly, this is really just kind of cementing that sort of commitment into our comp plan. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is everyone okay to move to the next item?
Quick, quick.
Okay.
The next one should be quick.
The fire station. Okay, we're going to move on to the next item, which is 8.2, another study session, updating us on the, on the polling regarding the potential bond for the South Shore Fire Station. So we have Chief Artman, Deputy City Manager Madison Thising, and then Miranda Everett with the polling, with the polling firm, FM3. Great to have you all here.
Good afternoon, Mayor Buck, councilors, thank you for having us back again. This afternoon, oh, sorry, I'm Assistant Fire Chief Christine Artman. With me, I have Miranda Everett from FM3 Research and Madison Thising, Deputy City Manager. We are here today to provide an update on the community outreach efforts related to the South Shore Fire Station project. Miranda will begin with the polling results presentation, and then after answering any questions you may have, we will turn it over to Madison for an update on the continued community engagement process. So, turn it over to you, Miranda.
Thank you, mayor, councilors, staff. My name's Miranda Everett, and I'm a partner at FM3 Research, we're based in Portland, Bay Area, and LA. We just completed a poll of voters in the city on the replacement of the South Shore Fire Station. I'll start by talking about the methodology of our survey, this was conducted at the beginning of June, took about a week in the field with our dual-mode approach, which means we contact people just about every way we know how, landlines, cell phones, text-to-web. We were able to reach a random representative sample of 410 voters in this manner. These are likely November 2026 voters, so not all voters, but a narrower share of that. Our margin of sampling error with that sample of around 400 is about 5% overall, and when you see half samples, it's closer to 7%. But I think most of the substantive results here, the full sample applies. So, starting with our big-picture context here, pollsters love to ask people, are things headed in the right direction, or are they off on the wrong track? Just kind of gets people into the mood of taking the survey and gives a quick look at optimism and pessimism in the city.
Stop buttering us up with the first one.
Yes, and it butters up some councils, and others, it makes them sad, but you guys should feel good. 57% say things are headed in the right direction, just 21% say things are off on the wrong track. I do lots and lots of research in Portland and other cities up and down the West Coast, and this compares quite favorably to many of those. It's all relative. So early on in the survey, before, folks had a lot of information and background and education about the ballot measure, we wanted to give them the super-short and sweet caption that they would see on their ballot, just to see as a starting point where they, where they are when they have that one piece of information we know everyone will get before they get, check a yes or a no, which is the, the actual title and caption. So you'll see what we tested here in the blue box, it's got a strict word limit, we also have to talk about taxes and the limits of the Oregon Constitution, it's just something that's required in bond measure language. With this and nothing else, kind of to go on, we have majority support for the measure, 54% in favor, 28% said they would definitely vote yes, that outstrips the definitely no at 20%, as you can see. But notably, we've got 1 in 10 who are undecided, and that might make sense given the kind of legal use of the language here.
So that's without any further information?
Yep, all they have is what's in the blue there, so that's where we start. And the rest of the poll, as we dig in deeper, will show some more information we provided both pro and con. Lots of information by demographics to share, the patterns here are fairly typical in that younger voters are more supportive than older ones, seniors more supportive than folks between 40 and 64 is also fairly common, and then not much of a gender gap here. Majority support across all of these demographics except the 40 to 64 band. We also asked folks their own self-description of their political ideology, as well as their registration, their party registration, which we have on the voter file and don't need to ask. Progressives and liberals are very supportive here, 76% say they would vote yes, just based on the ballot measure title and caption. And then folks are split down the middle among moderates, which I believe is the most numerous sort of self-described category in the city. And then a slim majority of conservatives actually oppose the measure, and you can see the intensity of the opposition is quite strong with that small group of folks. When it comes to party registration, you have 2/3 support from Democrats, independents, plurality support, but just under a majority, that includes those non-affiliated voters that are fairly numerous these days, and majority opposition, rather, among Republican voters.
Do we know the breakdown of the, of the parties in the total? Is it a 3rd, 3rd, 3rd?
Yeah. Not quite, but I think that's pretty close, I can bring it up. Another slide we have shows the sort of range of election scenarios. We look at people's past voting behavior as a predictor of how they'll vote in the future. So the 6+ at the bottom of the slide, those are the folks who, in the last six opportunities, primary or general, to cast a ballot, they did it every time. Five or more, four or more, three or more, two or more, one or more. So as you go up the slide, you're getting sort of a broader electorate, maybe a presidential, something like that. At the bottom of the slide, you're getting the folks who are the most kind of loyal and specific voters. So we thought that was important to look at because we're looking at an election that will potentially, if you go with November, have the governor's race on it, but not presidential, so there's all those things in the mix there. Given the margin of error of the survey, there's not too much difference. Really what we see is that that 6+, the sort of most loyal, most regular voters, they're more supportive than voters overall. So that's a good sign for when we're looking at something other than a presidential turnout. And the breakdown for party is 48% Democrat, 23% Republican, and the remainder, non-affiliated or another party. So we had noted earlier the sort of overall yes vote, we wanted to look not just at that yes vote and the no vote, but the intensity of it. These are the folks who are softly supportive, they said, I'm a probable yes, I'm undecided, but leaning yes, or purely undecided. That's 37% of voters, and so that's a decent share of folks who would need to be persuaded to support the measure. The good news here is that these are folks who are typically pretty supportive of finance measures, that includes progressives, liberals, more Democratic and younger voters. So these are folks who are maybe tentative at first, but are typically supportive of these types of approaches. We asked folks in an open-ended question to tell us why they would vote yes if they were yes voters. A lot of them mentioned, 31% mentioned something having to do with reliable emergency response or public safety, very clear to them that having a fire station in good condition and good working order is something that supports public safety. Notably, 16% specifically noted that they wanted safe work environments for their first responders, and then another 15% called out earthquake or disaster preparedness, more specifically, 14% called out infrastructure more generally, and then a range of other responses. And these add up to more than 100 because folks could offer more than one rationale. We also asked the no voters why they oppose it, and they had one pretty strongly shared opinion, and that is that taxes are too high, that is not uncommon at all, we see that pretty much all the time. The other response that was fairly common and that we also see fairly commonly is just a sense that government wastes money, more principled sense. And then 18% just don't see the need for a new or upgraded fire station right now.
They haven't taken the tour yet.
Exactly, exactly.
Sorry, go back one.
Yep.
Only, only 140, sorry, thank you all. Only 143 were asked this question?
Yes, only the people who said they would vote no initially were asked why they voted no. Yeah. And then they, you know, they wrote it out online, or they told our interviewer, and we put them into these categories. Yeah. So, we wanted to give people a little bit more information and put it in plainer language, so here is a brief description of what the measure would do. We're specific about the bond amount, we would, we say that it would be, you know, earthquake-safe, it would provide dedicated space for decontamination. It would provide dedicated space for decontamination, living quarters for increased staffing, and community space. So some of the key things that we talked about with staff that would be delivered by this measure were described. And this is also something that would be kind of similar to how it looks either in a newspaper or when they get their sort of voter's pamphlet with some shorthand information. So we wanted to keep it short and sweet, but also hit the key points. With this information, we do lift support substantially. We moved from 54% yes initially to 59% yes. That's a much more comfortable margin, given the survey's overall margin of error. And I think what's especially notable and good here is that we move our definitely yes up to 35% with just that kind of plain language information. So there's a lot of evidence here that once folks kind of understand the need for the station, just in four bullet points, that is a measure that is well-prepared to succeed. But the task will be that communication and getting that out to the public. So next, we really wanted to dig into willingness to pay, looking at different price points for the overall bond measure, and also more specifically, how much the average person might pay, two totally different ways of looking at it, as well as their priorities more specifically for the station. So notably here, and this is not uncommon, we don't see really any difference between $25 million, $18 million, $22 or $20 million, what's another million here and there to the average voter. They're just really big numbers and hard to conceptualize. So we can see we have support there from 3 and 5, more or less, in each of these scenarios. However, when we ask it at the household level, we said per household, per year, 100, 150, 200, 250. We do see a distinct difference between 100, where we've got 2/3 saying they're willing to pay that amount, all the way down to 200, where you've got a majority that looks much more similar to what we saw for the initial ask. And then at 250, we have a slimmer majority, but still a nine-point margin in favor. So you can see those household amounts, a lot more meaningful for people than the overall bond amount.
Do we know what $100 would get us a year versus 250?
Was that the 17 million, roughly 17 million?
Would be $100?
16 cents per thousand, if I'm remembering correctly.
I think we intended them to align with the overall bond amounts roughly. So.
Oh, 18 million.
That's total for the household, not per.
Well, if $100 is 18 million, then 250 would be 50 million.
Yeah.
Based on about a $650,000 home.
16 cents per thousand, you said?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, there's a lot of ambiguity around that. A lot of folks, you know, knowing assessed value versus market value and all of those sorts of things, but basically just drilling down into, how much are you personally willing to pay compared to all the other bills and utilities and things that you pay? So we see a little bit of a distinction here, but folks willing to pay as much as $200 a year. So next, we wanted to dig into uses of funds. This can be helpful for us in really sharpening that 15-word ballot title. It can also be helpful in communications for us, understanding what are the ways, the words and phrases, the verbs and adjectives and nouns that are especially compelling for folks. And here, we asked people to tell us how important each specific kinds of investment is to them, extremely, very, somewhat, or not at all. And on this slide, you can see everything in shades of blue, is at least somewhat important to folks, 80% and higher. But really, there's some intensity around a few of these with the darkest blue, and that is supporting emergency medical response times and supporting citywide response to critical fires, accidents, and medical emergencies. What you'll notice about what's most kind of standing out on this slide, it's the first in a series, is that we're supporting some outcomes. So, we know this is a bond measure, it has to be used for capital investment, but when we talk about what the outcomes actually are, that's what really resonates. The one thing on this slide that really stands out as something that is more specific and concrete is that decontamination area to limit firefighter exposure to carcinogens. So some big scary words there, and something I think that really aligns with what we saw earlier in the survey, where folks had not even this level of information, but they still said, "I want safe working environments for my firefighters." Moving down the list a bit more, you can see majorities call each of these extremely or very important. Intensity is a little bit lower, but still quite high. And now you're starting to see more of the sort of concrete sorts of investments. Replacing outdated and deteriorating electrical wiring, the leaky roof, space for increased staffing during emergency or natural disaster, storage for modern medical and firefighting tools and equipment, storage for PPE for firefighters. So just helping people sort of picture visually, in a sort of concrete sense, what would be funded here, also quite important to them. Moving down the list a bit more, you can see things that majorities or fewer called extremely or very important, and the not at all importance starts to creep up a bit for just a few of them. Notably, outdated group locker rooms and bathroom facilities being replaced with individual private facilities. I think there, without the context of different sexes of firefighters, then that might be something that kind of goes over your head. But we saw that was a little less compelling, as well as the community room and making that accessible. I think when, you know, people are thinking about this, they're thinking, "High priority for me, earthquake-safe fire station. If it has a community room, that's great." What's notable here is the kind of banner headline, "Replacing the South Shore Fire Station." That goes fairly low. So I think what really that underscores again is the focus that we need to have on outcomes. Another thing we'd like to ask about is potential accountability elements. All funds being spent directly on this project, that's highly appealing to folks. 69% saying they would be more likely to vote for a measure that had that assurance. Independent annual audits of city budget and bond spending, 66%. And then no money for salaries or pensions, plurality, who say they're more likely to support a measure with that included. We often find that these things are important to highlight, even if we know we do them sort of as a matter of course, because the average person may not know that or just like to have the reassurance. So next, we wanted to provide more information to folks, both pro and con, to see how much they shifted in their opinions, to see how much we're able to sort of persuade and inform, and how much sort of negativity or criticism might hurt us. And what we see here is that information and positive messages lift support to 3 and 5, and we stay there pretty steadily. The definitely yes vote increases to more than 1/3, which is fantastic. And then even after some negative messaging, our sort of low point is only right back where we started at 54%. So this is a fairly good, fairly positive results here. I think the after positives and negatives line is sort of the worst-case scenario, and the best-case scenario is one where there is information that's communicated to the entire community, that folks are able to really understand how this would support those goals we talked about earlier that they value. And then we'll talk in a second about the messages that were most compelling to them. We like to look at consistency of support, not just the patterns overall. I think this is another data point that made us feel positive about your results here, is that 46% of your voters consistently said they would vote yes on the measure. 22% are consistently no. Those folks are not necessarily going to be one over here. And then the swing voters, 32%. You really only need to win about 1/3 of those swing voters to have success. And I think there are some folks in that category who are persuadable. The box here shows who sort of overrepresented in each category disproportionately. You've got progressive and liberal voters, older Democrats, and less formally educated voters in the consistent yes column. The consistent no column is sort of the mirror image of that. They're more conservative and Republican, they're more moderate. And then the swing voter is an interesting group, independent women, folks served by the main fire station, higher-income folks, and then older independents, younger Republicans and conservatives. So an interesting, diverse group there. Now, here are the positive messages we tested. Running down the left-hand side, you'll see the share who called each one a very convincing reason to support the measure. Our scale was very somewhat or not convincing. Our sort of rule of thumb in the firm is 40% or higher is something that is highly persuasive. And you've got a lot that meets and exceeds that benchmark. All my clients are jealous. The minutes and coverage message, that did really spectacularly, 53% called that very convincing. This one just gives a few facts. Property destruction in a house fire generally exceeds 50% after just eight minutes of burning. Every minute counts during a heart attack. That's why the city sends firefighters from two stations to critical calls. So that's really highlighting for folks that even though this might serve, you might think this serves the south area of the city, it actually serves more than that. And then a similar theme with out was our shorthand for that one. The idea that if we have one fewer fire station, response times will increase. The size one, I thought that was interesting. This really focuses on one kind of specific piece, that the only one of the fire stations can fit a traditional fire truck, and we just don't have enough room at the South Shore Station for modern tools and equipment. So just saying, this would make the station more modern and allow it to fit a fire truck. And then we have the age message, which really focuses, I think this is the kind of version of the message that's like going on a tour. It's not meeting modern disability access standards, it has a leaky roof, outdated electrical wiring and plumbing, things like that. And again, highlighting that our firefighters deserve a safe station. The decontamination message also did well. We saw that performed very highly when we asked people about it in that kind of short question. I think, you know, it's clear here why this one's important. It's just, you know, something that's very risky, potentially, that we can, with the right technology and infrastructure, reduce that risk. The wildfire message also does quite well, talking more specifically about how the south side of town has some specific risks there. And then two that fell relatively flat were about kind of water rescues and about the uses for the community, for the station. I think those are just kind of relatively speaking, less persuasive than the ones having to do with the age of the station, with firefighter working conditions, and with the risk of fire, wildfire specifically. So here you see not just the very convincing numbers, but also the somewhat convincing numbers. We have three sort of tiers here of the most highly effective messages. Those are the ones that you would deliver if you've got somebody stuck in an elevator with you. The second tier, if you've got, you know, the elevator is a long ride, you have more there. And you can see that decontaminate message has the intensity there, but it also has the breadth of folks who are reacting to that message. 78% called out at least somewhat convincing. And then that lowest tier of the rescue boat and the community. Lots of numbers on this slide, just kind of highlighting for you all some of the key demographics where 40% or more called a message convincing. What's important here, I think, to note is for our swing voters in the middle there, the minutes and coverage and the without, the impact of not having the fire station, the fourth fire station in the city are the most compelling messages. You can also see there are a few messages that cut across party lines in terms of persuasion, and that's those first two. And then there's a number of other messages you can see for folks who are served by the South Shore Fire Station. Basically, all the messages work, which makes a lot of sense. We also wanted to test some opposition arguments, some things kind of coming from the other side. The one that was the most compelling was the cost of living is too high, our taxes are too high, we just can't afford it right now. 33% said that was a very convincing reason to vote no. 31% saying the same about, you know, kind of debt financing. 29% saying we should renovate instead. And then relatively unpersuasive are the economic uncertainty message and the idea that we should just close the station. So that one basically fell flat. We just don't see an appetite to close the station. So, that takes me to our conclusions and our recommendations for the future here. So we believe a bond measure to replace the South Shore Fire Station with an earthquake-safe station to support emergency response times is viable for 2026 ballot. Yeah, we looked at both, and both look viable. We see, yeah, no worries.
May versus?
I was asking her about whether we could go in May versus the November election.
Yeah, and we have the slide with the arrow for turnout, and we saw that the sort of lower turnout models look just as good as the higher turnout model. So I think that's our indicator there, that your own sort of internal timelines and communications and things like that should guide decision-making there rather than the polling. We do see negative arguments reduce support. That demonstrates the need to avoid well-organized opposition and really keep an eye on the cost of living and the things that are sort of out of your control, but that can influence how people feel about this measure. It's really, really important for folks to get communications about this measure. We saw how impactful it was for them to get just four bullet points. It really should focus on the outcomes of a new station, supporting emergency medical times, disaster response, and citywide response to critical fires, accidents, and medical emergencies. And then we also saw that specifics, like the need for those decontamination areas, the age and condition of the current station, like going on a tour in words, and then the impacts of fast response times for house fires and heart attacks, just to help make it more concrete and relatable, those are also highly persuasive for folks. So now, that's a lot of information in a short time. Happy to take questions.
You very much, yeah. See any questions on the polling? You did a great job, very thorough. Very thorough, yes, okay. We're ready for the next portion.
So my portion's going to be short. It's just really, we want to talk about, as a reminder, this is a baseline. So in the presentation and in the polling, we used up to 25%, or excuse me, up to $25 million for the project. The main thing right now, we're on two parallel tracks. We're trying to gauge community support and getting the message out why we need a project. And at the same time, Chris is, or excuse me, Chief Artman, is working on the building itself. So we don't have concrete costs, but we at least need to know where we start. And so I just want to make sure we make that a very, very clear note at the beginning, like this is a baseline. As we move along the building process, we'll be able to say in our messaging what the actual cost will be, not only as a concrete, how much will the building be, but what will it be to tax per dollars? By the time we refer to a ballot measure, as you all know, we will actually need to have that, those specifics. And so this is giving us a, how do we start the conversation, and what's the overall appetite to say, are we going to a viable option in the springtime, or is this already, we're a year or two years out of at least getting support? So, again, this was just a way to give us a baseline. Now, it's a really great baseline. We know what messages resonate with people, we know what really is the value statements of our community, which is response, readiness, the citywide impact, and not just what we found, and a lot of it was not about geographical impact, as in, if you're at Lorac, what does that mean? It actually is, if you're at Safeway or Albertsons, if you have a heart attack, all these stations need to be able to respond. And so we're going to continue to focus on the outcome base. With that being said, then now through the fall, and what you'll see in the council report is we are in the mode of education and public information. We are not in a campaign mode, we are just educating, educating, educating. And then when we get into a stage of talking about whether we go out for bond, obviously the city will still stay in the lane of public education, that is our role, and we are making sure that people understand the project, as well as the journey we're going to be on for the next few months as we learn more about the specifics. As Miranda had shared, and I know we've talked about this in the past, voters, in some ways, when we go out to ballot, is like a bell curve. We have the strong yes and the strong no. So right now, for the next six months, our focus will be in that center of the bell curve, of moving people as they learn more, are they leaning towards support? And so all of our efforts right now is getting the fire department out in front and center at the farmers' markets, at concerts, at senior living centers, multifamily housing, anything that's a high concentration of people, but also the audiences that we know will be most vested in a project like this, especially not just on, again, the geographical area, but for the whole city. So thinking about Westlake concerts, for example, or Lake Grove Farmers Market, not just our main downtown core area. So that's outlined in the council report. Additionally attached is our communications and engagement plan. That is a working document. Again, we're on a journey, and so everything will evolve. The messaging will start to now be really focused on the values and the outcomes that we know from the polling. And then what we, our goal is, is after, because it is July, we're going to be working on this all the way till the new year, and then in the new year, do another poll, which will then give us a short glimpse of, are we still on the same track? Have we gotten better after now six to seven months of high-intensity education and outreach? And so then with that, we'll take that to council for a discussion and have then that question of, what is the plan? Is it May or November? But this is the beginning, and I don't want to say beginning, because we've done a lot of work, but from the public perspective, we are continuing to build on this starting baseline conversation.
Great. When you're talking, you're talking November of 26?
Yeah, so question is May 26 or November 26? We need a poll again in the beginning of the new year.
I think the.
I think the consideration will be depending on what, and obviously you guys will have to make the decision, because once you refer, then the work all shifts to you. I'm sorry about that. And the community members who you've brought along on this process. But you would not be able to levy, if you go in May, you could potentially levy taxes in '26 to actually begin the construction project.
Right, okay.
If you go in November, then it'll be a full year before we can actually move to construction.
Okay.
If that, if I'm making any sense, that the five, the six-month delay in the election actually causes a year delay in the project.
One, one thing I think that really came out in the polling is that we, I mean, there's good, there's good support, but not limitless support, you know, for the project. And we heard this a little bit too when we took the roundtable on the road and went out there, and the sentiments seemed very similar, just anecdotally to what we heard, you know. And, you know, people, it sounds like, what I took away from the polling is they, they want a safe and, and a kind of effective core critical facility, but not necessarily with like the bells and whistles. And, and I know that, I mean, just because we could, you know, because something does pull, okay, doesn't necessarily mean we should do it either. And, you know, this community is going to be voting in November on a school bond renewal. And who the heck knows what the economic climate will be, you know, in '26? We don't know, you know? And so I think it's kind of our obligation to deliver like the best project that we can that really meets the needs of this fire department, but that isn't like the world's fanciest fire station we've ever seen that is trying to do everything for the community. It's a fire station, it's a meeting room, it's this and that. It's like, this needs to be very functional and safe for the men and women that work there. That's, I think, pretty much it, you know? And, and I think that would be great, giving us, as we're the ones that have to sell it, confidence, saying, listen, this is just what we need and not an ounce more. Because we don't have, we don't have majority really support for this. We need to get those swing voters over and convince them that this is critical. And I think it's going to be difficult with some of those lower ranking items if they're included. I don't know how you all feel about that.
Yeah, no.
But the library bond too, at some point, like we have to worry about an appetite for that.
It'll be the only thing.
Yeah. But I'm with you.
That adds up. Okay, Councilor.
I completely agree. I just also want to make sure that we build it so that it will be a good station in 15, 20 years, so that we're not looking back and saying, oh, we totally missed something or we're, you know. So I don't want to just spend it just for the sake of spending it. If we can bring that down and say, you know what, it's realistic that we can spend, and I'm just going to throw out a number because I don't, so this is just random, you know, hey, if we could get something done for, you know, 15, 16, 17 million versus the 25, you know, so if we can bring that down and get our needs met, that we also think will meet the needs of the future, I'm all for that. I don't want to skimp so small that like just that bare minimum, that then we're regretting not doing something in the future. So it's, I think it's trying to get that balance.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Wedlund.
So I'm, I'm all for the private stations. I mean, I know that didn't pull as well, but I, on the, for the, yes, oh, we need to be modern, okay? We, and I don't think people necessarily maybe understood that. There's all kinds of things with conversations in this city about unisex toilets at the junior highs, and it's still rubbing people different ways. I mean, it's, it's an interesting thing when you talk about facilities like that. One thing that I do think that, I don't know whether this is an option or not, but one suggestion I had from somebody in the community is, why don't we take the blueprint from your best fire department and just duplicate it instead of spending two and a half million dollars on architectural fees and whatever? I guess there's the way to look at it where we already have fire stations in the city. Is there one that works super well and we just duplicate those, you know? And I know it's not that simple, and it deals with a different topography and so on. But all I'm saying is that, to the mayor's point, we are, we're probably going to be asking for money for a library. If we can come across as being fiscally responsible, you might say in this, we have a better chance of future projects. And the other thing is that I would suggest that we go in May, because if we go in November, people have their property taxes of the bond, if it does pass for the school district, they're gonna, November is always those tricky months when you're asking for new taxes and they just got their property tax bill. So I would shoot for May. And also, if that gives us a year ahead in building it, we need to get these fire department people a facility that they can live in, the sooner the better. So, but happy with the polling. I am a little surprised that while it's positive, it's not as home run as, as it could be. And I don't know why, you know, I, I think, I think of fire stations, it's one of those things where I think almost everybody supports fire stations. I do think you're going to have to have a answer on why building a new fire station is going to decrease at response times, because people might say, well, the building's already there, are they going to get faster trucks or what? I mean, it's, have some rationale from the, some of those bullet points that we've got those very well clearly defined, but.
Is that opposed to not having a station at all, response time? That's what I assume, like if we didn't have the station because it fell to the ground?
Oh, I think that that was part of the.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you remove it from the.
Like we have to rebuild it, otherwise, like, we're not going to just run it dilapidated.
Well, and I think, I mean, we know it's going to fall down in a major earthquake, and so you will have a decline in response times when that happens.
Well, that's a good point that Councilor Wedlund makes, because, yeah, you think, what are we?
It's close to falling down anyway.
Yeah, once people see it.
So I think we need to also really focus on the condition of that building is horrible. So, you know, just the more we can do that, I don't know if it would be helpful to have another, like, come visit and see the condition of the fire station.
That's part of the plan, yeah.
Or just that it, it will, it won't be able to function, so we can't use it. So then that's going to increase the timing. So that messaging has to, it has to be replaced if we want to maintain our response times. So.
Yeah, and the verb we used was supporting, and that seemed to do well. And that, I think, implies maintaining and also not increasing if the station was offline.
Yeah. Councilor Corrigan. Thanks, Councilor.
Boy, I appreciate what you all have had to contribute. I spent a lot of time on this, going through as a liaison for the, with the fire station from the very beginning, and I think, oh, I'm not going.
You're good.
I'm good, okay. Oh, I have one other thing I'm watching on, I'm sorry, on leg. Anyway, so I really, I want everyone to know, I really do understand and appreciate the voter sensitivity to our, our level of taxes. I mean, everybody's aware of that. So I'm very, very happy with the, with the, the strong commitment to continue our educational efforts. I'm not sure that everybody understands that there is absolutely no path to remodel, because I saw that come up again. We know that the bays are too small, you can't save those. The living quarters aren't earthquake safe, you can't save that. So we really, we have to have, we have to have a new station. And the other thing is, I'm not sure that people understand that they, they really do work as a system. They shift back and forth to fill the need, just like a basketball team. And the other thing I think I'd like to add is, in our educational effort, I would actually like to get, based on what I heard, maybe a little more, a little more factual, a little more emotional. I'm not sure that everybody understands the time that a, that a fire can double in. And it's actually 30, a fire can double in 30 to 60 minutes, 30, 30 to 60 seconds, I'm And I think that the other thing that you hear all the time is that time is brain, and we were, we heard about that a lot in the process where people have strokes. And we do have an eight-minute response time, but it turns out if you can get there in seven minutes, you can help someone a whole lot more. So I think what I, I would really like to find a way to have people think about is, you know, what is a life worth as we go through this? It's not just, it's not just the dollars and cents and the physical structure, it's, it's, you know, how important is this to us? And I think people, if they really take a hard look at it, will realize it's, it's plenty important.
Yeah, that's a great point. You'll, you'll head up the campaign, that's for sure. That's really good. Councilor Corrigan. Yeah. I'll put you in charge. Thank you. Councilor Afghan.
I am going to ask a question, and I think City Manager knows the answer before I share some thoughts with you. How much did this building cost?
About $42 million.
So if you add maybe another eight or 10 million for inflation and COVID and this and that, we're talking about half of this whole structure at 25 million. That's a lot of money and a lot of space. So where am I going with this? The options I see on the table is no fire, no fire at station because it's so old and it's not safe for people to work in there, or have a new one. And not having one is not an option. So it's like, when I look at things, it, we must do this, and we must figure out how to get the voters there, whether it's with the response time, or with being able to help people, or our firefighters are exposed to carcinogenic, or they are, with the working condition we have, the suicide rates are, there is a whole lot of stuff that we can bring to the table, but at the end of the day, the message has to be crystal clear so they have no option but say yes. So that's, for me, that's a yes, regardless of how we do it. We must deliver this across the finish line. The sooner the better, because I believe we were late already. And we have people who are working in that environment, and if we have the earthquake that 300 years, it's overdue by 300 years, not only we won't be able to respond, but we're also going to lose people, and that doesn't make sense. So we need to go sooner than later. And the third thing is, $25 million is a lot of money. So I know somebody in the audience is sitting and listening, we need to bring all the expertise to the table and have a building that's functionable, that lasts 50 years, and it's not Taj Mahal, and with the owner's representative that we just hired, with the CMGC contract and the strategy that we're going to do, with the bidding that we do, we need to bring this in at a much, much lower cost than what we're putting out there to the voters, yes or no. And the lower numbers, I'm tapping into my inner Counselor Wedlund, the lower that number is, the higher number of yeses we're going to get. And we also have to balance with everything else that the best mayor was talking about, the bond for this, the levy for that, and all of that stuff. But this must get across the finish line. So there are so many things that needs to come together in order for us to deliver, but definitely not 25 million.
Thank you, Councilor Afghan. Yeah, I think so as we're working with, with, with the owner's rep, you know, in this, I mean, it seems like you're going to reach those points, like what can we get, what can we do on the piece of land that we own right now? You know, what can we do? And then when they start hitting those critical pieces like, well, to do this, we need more land, that's where it should be okay. And, and I don't know if it ends up that we deliver kind of, we come to us with a point like, hey, here's kind of what we can do on the, or here's what we can, you know, before we get too far down. I don't think we want is to come to us with one option that's completely engineered, that we're going to say, uh-uh, you know?
No, we need to bring you along the entire way.
Yes.
Yeah, and I do think there are going to be critical design points where we need to be in front of councils saying, hey, this is what you get for 18 million, this is what you get for 20.
That'd be great. That'd be great.
Let's start, this is what you get for 12, this is what you get for 15, this is what you get for 18.
We did look at what you get for 12, and you don't, unfortunately. This building would, if we built it today, it would cost us 80 million. That's how construction costs have changed in the five years since we've been in this building. And so I think we have to be realistic about the per square footage cost, but that's what you all need to see, is the per square footage cost as opposed to an abstract number. You need to know, this is what it's gonna cost. So if you decide you want to lower the number, you're, you're shrinking square footage. We did look at 12 million, because that's where I, I started at 9 million, just so you all are know, because of another fire station that was built over 10 years ago that cost 9 million.
Right.
But I don't think that's realistic anymore. But I do think it's realistic to get down into the 100 to $150 per, for the average household. And that's probably what I learned from the polling is, that's the number that we have to target, because that's the number that people actually vote on.
Right.
I just want to add, following City Manager Bennett, we put 25 out not because we think it's going to. We don't have a building design, we don't have transition costs included, we have a, a starting number based off of comps that the task force used, and we are going to then do our due diligence for the next six months. But by no means is this saying that is what it's going to be. It's an up to so that we can at least start a conversation. The other thing about that is, we didn't want to put something low, knowing it's an incomplete picture. And so this was a, a choice to make sure we're building trust along the way, rather than promoting a number that we knew wasn't indicative of everything else that might need to go.
I do think though, that what the councillors are telling us is that once you float that high number, then we design to that high number. And I think that's what they're, that's the concern that they're expressing.
And by no means is that the intention, yes.
Okay, Councilor Afghan has an extremely great point.
I think the City Manager just said it, it's, once you have, I'm in this business, and the first number somebody floats, it's going to stick. Your consultants need to know that we're not there at all. And it's what's minimum scope, minimum number. So I appreciate what you said, this is, we had to pick a number to get some opinions. But your consultants need to know that we're not driving based on the budget, we're driving based on the scope, and the scope needs to be reasonable, that lasts us 50 years, and that's about it. Thank you.
Well, well summarized. Okay. Good? Yeah. Thank you very much. Great presentation. Thanks for your work on the polling. This was very informative.
Yeah, very thorough. I very appreciate it.
Continue moving forward. Okay, I gotta take, we gotta take a break, and we'll come back. We're gonna take a 10-minute recess.
Very good.
We're back in order. Thank you, everyone. Next item on our agenda is information from council. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share? Counselor Afghan?
Mr. Mayor, we kicked off the Community Health and Resiliency Board last week, and we had a good start. We had everyone plus the alternates show up. We have four Davids. Three of them are doctors, so it gets very confusing with Dr. David. And we actually have four doctors. So it worked out that way, fortunately, because we are working on the health portion of the conversation. So very good start, and I know that you have committed to showing up next meeting to give us a pep talk and get us more inspired to deliver that. The other item is, I don't know if you guys attended the concerts that, it's every Wednesday down by the foothills. The first one was last Wednesday, and I wanted to give a shout out to the supporters, sponsors. Thank you very much. Lake Oswego Review, Fenton Properties, and Charles Show Up of Portland, Oregon. It was a great, as always, a great event with a lot of people who showed up, even though the weather was a little warm. So thank you very much to the Parks and Recreation Team, who do a great job at these events.
Awesome. Thanks, Counselor Afghan. Counselor Will?
Just wanted to tell you that we had our first tree committee meeting, and it was mostly introductory comments from different members of who's working the kind of the layout of what they're supposed to do. I think it's a good group. We'll see what happens. If you have any input on trees and how we're supposed to kind of approach things, let me know. Give me a call. It's pretty set on the urban forestry plan goals. But I think there's one thing that I think we need to be conscious of that is that, as we just had our housing production strategy presentation today and everything else, it has to coincide with a lot of different goals of the total city. So we can't just be myopic and just look at trees just as the only aspect. And so if you've got input, let me know, because we'll start the real discussion the next meeting. So you've got another week or two.
Thank you very much. City manager?
I think you all know that we are right now in a high temperature, I don't remember what they call it, heated advisory. And I just want to do a shout out to Parks and Recreation staff, because with the opening of the Lake Oswego Recreation and Aquatic Center, we're now open, we're now able to have a cooling center that's open from very early in the morning to about nine o'clock in the evening. So if you are asked about a cooling shelter, the Lorac is now, of course, folks can go to the ACC and the library during open hours. That is a good place to cool down. Both of those are good places to cool down. But for folks who really don't have air conditioning and need something that's later in the evening or that's earlier in the morning, the Lorac is our cooling shelter. And so huge shout out to Park staff for that.
That's great.
And then just a quick reminder that your next council meeting, you will actually have a council meeting in August. It's August 5th. It's the same night as National Night Out. Your meeting will start at three o'clock, and we're going to try really hard to get you out of here by 5:30 so that you can go to National Night Out activities. If you have questions about that, let me know. Also, if you hadn't have a chance to meet Emma Campbell yet, she's this summer's Kinkade intern. She was actually super excited to come to council tonight, so I'll find out tomorrow whether that excitement was warranted or not. Thank you all for being on pretty great behavior so that she got to see the best of the Lake Oswego City Council. So anyway, please say hi to Emma, and you'll see her doing a lot of the organizing for the National Night Out activities.
Thanks, Emma. Okay, thank you, Ms. Bennett. Okay, with that, we're going to adjourn the council meeting and call to order the Lake Oswego Redevelopment Agency. We have one item on the agenda tonight, and that is an update on the North Anchor. So I invite our friends from UDP, Mr. Kress and Mr. Nato and Mr. Nato. It's good to have you all here.
My son is interning at our office this summer, so I should have brought him along so I could say, Kress, Kress. Thank you, Mayor, and councilors, for continuing to be good partners and while also being passionate advocates for the city of Lake Oswego and for your stakeholders. Today, we're here to give you an update on Lake Oswego North Anchor. I'm going to focus primarily on the hotel, because that's a lot of the lifting that we've been doing and focused over since we last met. And Bob and Will and our team have made progress in a number of areas, and we want to give you an update there and also share with you what we have ahead to do and accomplish to get this project off the ground. Maybe I'll go ahead and slip in here. Most of the work here is that we've been doing is on financing, and as we've articulated in the development business, that's really half the job is getting, you know, it's kind of like when you see the building come out of the ground, that's the tip of the iceberg. But below the water is all the work that goes in in terms of, of course, permitting and entitlement, but also bringing, getting the money together and getting all of the financial aspects together. So that's where we have been really working. And for those of you who have been following this project, know that it's been a challenging time to work through financing with all that has gone on since COVID and then the other vicissitudes of geopolitics and whatnot over the past few years and months. The, we are going to pursue a financing capital stack that is, we would call alternative, although it's not uncommon, particularly for hotels. So I wanted to spend some time describing that to you all and where we are with those, with that pursuit. And some of this does require some help from county government in terms of policy. So we appreciate any kind of advocacy or help that you all and others can provide to help us move that forward. And then also part of that, what we want to do, also want to introduce land acquisition as part of that capital stack so that we can accelerate the project. And then we're going to talk a little bit about timeline and Q and A so we can discuss any questions that you have. So this is the alternative financing capital stack that we're talking about. It's not, I do describe it as alternative, although in, particularly in hotel finance, it's not uncommon. There are a lot of projects being, well, not a lot, but the projects that are getting financed these days are, include, particularly in the hotel industry, a combination of EB5 and CPACE. And I'm going to get into the details of that. So what, we are close to signing an agreement to finance up to 75% of the hotel through an EB5 financing vehicle, which may include some CPACE if that's approved by the county. And we talked about that in a few minutes, in which in some case, we may use that to accelerate groundbreaking. And then the land acquisition is a piece that will include a land lease component. It's essentially just a land acquisition, which is part of the equity capital stack. So I know this is a busy slide, so I'm not going to do all of this. And I know you guys have these slides. But CPACE, just going to describe that quickly. CPACE is a loan program. It's a commercial, what is it? Let me, what's the P stand for? Sorry, I put you on the spot. But it's essentially environmental sustainable, sustainability-focused loan program. And it is, works well particularly in hospitality, where there's a lot of opportunity to officially run buildings that are environmentally sustainable. And of course, in the Pacific Northwest, we have pretty tight codes that make it a good fit. So we actually don't have to make a whole lot of adjustments to the project here in order to qualify. The source of capital is not public dollars. It's all private monies. The way it works is states pass legislation to allow for CPACE. Oregon has passed that, so we can use CPACE in Oregon. However, in, and within these states, the loans are publicly administered, either by a public agency or through a partnership or contract with a private agency. And in Oregon, that happens through the county. So in order for us to use CPACE, we need Clackamas County to approve the use of CPACE. Our project is not the only one looking at this financing vehicle, so we hope to work with the county to see if they will allow for CPACE administration in, within, within Clackamas County. It also, it is similar, I'll let you read the rest of this, but essentially it's similar to second mortgage. But because of the way it's organized, it works well with EB5 and other financing vehicles. A lot of financing is incompatible with a second mortgage. So a traditional bank loan, EB5, others are not compatible with a traditional second mortgage. So that's why CPACE is an important component. Through 2024, about $10 billion in CPACE loans were funded nationally. So this is not, you know, this is not a, something that's going to go away, and it's actually growing. It's a common financing vehicle. And just, there's kind of, this is kind of the things they look at. They evaluate how you build the building to make sure that it qualifies. And like I mentioned earlier, the state and access statute authorizing CPACE and then the programs administered through a public agency or through a contract with a private third party. And so that's where we'll need some help to work with the county in getting it approved. It is nice that there's a real project that this can be used for, so that is obviously can be compelling for counties to approve the program. Washington has approved a pilot project of the program. Washington County, Multnomah utilizes the program as well as a few others in Oregon. So it's not new to Oregon. As you can see here, the vast majority of states use CPACE. And with that, I want to go, I want to talk about the next piece, which is the EB5, which would work with the CPACE for financing. Will and Bob have used EB5 for several projects, so I'm going to pass the mic over, and you do a way better job of describing this than I do.
Sure. Yeah. Well, yeah, as the slide says, EB5 is a foreign investment program administered by USCIS Customs and Immigration. And it allows foreign investors to invest a dollar amount, in this case, a minimum of $800,000 in a U.S. business or, in this case, real estate project in order to create at least 10 jobs. And so this program works really well with hotels because there's significant job creation related to the construction and operation of the hotels. And so it allows for kind of a significant capacity for EB5 in a hotel project. And it's fairly common, especially in the last five years, for independent hotels especially to utilize EB5 as a part of their capital stack, kind of just due to the macroeconomic environment and the difficulty of getting independent hotels financed. Our EB5 provider that we're working with is the same one that Bob and I have done several other hotels with, including the Hoxton Hotel in Portland. They're a very experienced sponsor, having originally come out of the Canadian immigrant investor program, which was very active in the early 2000s in Canada. The Canadian government wound that program down, and AUMC pivoted their operations to EB5 in the U.S. And they've been, I think our first project with them was in 2014. And we have a, so we have an 11-year now track record with them, and they've been a good partner for us, and we've been, I think, a good partner for them. They still want to do business with us. And they have an office, they're headquartered in Vancouver, Canada, but also have their Oregon office in Lake Oswego. And their Oregon staff has been with them since the beginning of their U.S. operations and has worked directly with us on our other EB5 projects. So we, yeah, we built both the Hampton and the Hoxton with AUMC and utilized another EB5 sponsor, oh, sorry, and the Nichols Building on this side. And then we've done another EB5 project with another sponsor.
Thanks, Will. Okay, so the last pieces, the, this puzzle, is land acquisitions. So we'd like to, and we're in early, we're in discussions to acquire the land. We've talked about this, I think last year, we talked a little bit about this. This will help us accelerate the capital raise. Some key components of this to remove risks from the city is that the city reserves the right to repurchase the property if we're unable to perform for any reason and essentially retains or is able to capture, recapture ownership. This is a, we've used this, we used this vehicle back in 2010 or '11 for a public-private partnership that we did with the city of Portland for the Slate Building, which some of you all would recognize it's a high-rise building on this, in the Central East Side, which was successful and worked really well. And we'd like to kind of dust those off. It's actually a pretty simple agreement, two pages that we had with the city of Portland to implement it. So we've been in conversation with that. There's some nuance to it, but it would help us move things forward quicker. And finally, timeline. So what have we been up to? So since we met last year, we spent the first early part of the fall and late summer exploring new capital alternatives with the Natos and figuring out how we could pivot and accelerate the hotel. We came across the EB5 idea, or that was introduced by you guys. And so we interviewed EB5 sponsors and selected AUM. And then we also started to investigate CPACE feasibility, which that's ongoing, because we do need that to be qualified by the county. We drafted our hotel partnership agreement. That's done. We drafted our EB5 offering documents, which was actually a lot of work behind that, because I have to do an entire economic study to make sure it qualifies with the feds. And then we are working towards closing on the land. If we can get to CPACE adoption, that will help us out and give us kind of an additional financing option in addition that we can work with EB5 to potentially accelerate the project start. And then, then we would pursue groundbreaking the hotel as early as February. We have two breakpoints in our agreement with AUM on EB5. One is mid-February for a capital raise threshold. And then if they're able to meet that threshold, and in particular, if we have CPACE as an option, then we would be in a position where we could break ground in Q1 of next year. If they are moving slowly, then we would also probably rely on CPACE in that case, but it would delay us a little bit. And then with the apartments thereafter, we would pursue breaking ground on those shortly thereafter. We really don't want to cannibalize the efforts of the hotel by doing them, doing EB5, coordinated EB5. We'd like to stagger that.
This timeline is a year off, right? It says 2025, but you mean 2026?
Oh, sorry. It is. Yes. Yes, sorry. 2026. 2020, right. 2026. Sorry about that.
Yes.
Wow. But the October 2020, it is October 2025, this upcoming fall. Okay.
Yeah, it's just the, after the CPACE adoption, these here, oh, I have a mouse here. These three are actually 2026. Sorry. That's my type.
The last two.
Yeah, actually, these last two. Yeah. And with that, we invite your questions.
Thank you for the explanation. I, I think we all really, you all have the timeline, you know, that we've given you, and really appreciate all the avenues you're exploring, trying to raise the money needed for this project. If folks were looking, they see that UDP has, you know, accomplished several other projects in the time that we've been, you know, in our relationship. You know, they might, why is this project so challenging to finance?
Yes, so this is true. We've, well, we've completed several projects that were, and you've seen other projects completed, right? Those were financed prior to 20, so the most recent completion, we financed in 2020. The timing for this, this particular project, I'd have to say, is probably about as difficult as you can get, because we closed on, you know, we were awarded the RFP in the end of 2019, technically 2020, and then, then, of course, COVID and everything else. Anything that, a lot of projects were financed in 2019 and completed through 2024. Those continue to move forward. So because there's such a lag, it may appear that you see stuff happening, but it takes, from closing of financing and completion of construction, sometimes you'll close on the financing in 2019, like we did, on projects. And then you don't break ground until mid-2020, and then you complete them, you know, in 2023, and then they're going through lease-up. So there's this appearance, but there's just such a lag from closing to start, whereas in 2020, we were going through entitlement period. So we were in a position to finance construction or even look at it. So that's, that's one answer. We also have broke ground on a couple of projects since then. So one is in Sacramento, but the city of Sacramento has provided a very large amount. I mean, the city of Lake Oswego is, but one's affordable housing project, right? So they put a lot of money into that project and essentially financed it. A good bit of it, provided for, you know, 50% of the equity. So the equivalent on this project would be like $12 million cash from the city. So that's a big check, and it's an affordable housing project. So that obviously will accelerate financing. So there's not a large equity requirement for one that we're doing in Sacramento. And then we have a couple of other projects, but they are not rental housing. They're for-sale housing, and so they've been, pre-sold rental housing is another type of product, or for-sale housing that we do. So we have a couple of those that we're, we've broken ground on as well. But most, what I'll say about, what is consistent about almost any project that gets financed right now is that you have to be, I would say, look at alternative, non-traditional financing vehicles, whether that's, you know, accommodating policy goals that lead to large public financing checks, whether affordable housing or whatnot. Or you look at EB5 and CPACE type of financing. I mean, CPACE is very popular right now because it's not your easiest financing vehicle. You wouldn't use it in 2017. There are cheaper and easier ways to finance a project. It's a lot of work for us. It's, and a lot of stakeholders have to get engaged to approve it.
That CPACE graph that showed usage of CPACE, kind of going up hyperbolically, you could, the inverse of that is the availability of conventional financing, which is driving this. And the other thing that may be different with hotels is in the conventional lenders for hotels, the ones we deal with in a normal market, have, I mean, I hate to say it, but because of downtown Portland and the number of rooms and the number of hotels there and the occupancy, and basically, you call people and say Portland, and they just hang up the phone. You tell them Lake Oswego, then you've got to say, where is it? Well, it's next to Portland, and then you get the same result. So the fact that, the fact that we did those three projects with American United over a couple of years, and the fact that they finished, they generated the jobs that were certified by USCIS, and then the investors got paid back, which is part of, this is a loan that we're doing, and they expect to be paid back. That's a pretty good track record to take to people that, you know, we have to, they have to be convinced about Lake Oswego and convinced about us, but that track record makes a difference. And so I think, I think we're in pretty good shape. We've got the documents done. What Will didn't mention, which was a great relief to me, is we got the appraisal back. The appraisal supports our valuation, plus a little bit on top. So, you know, the stars kind of are lining up for that.
Does, the three projects you listed, you've utilized this EB5 for, is the amount or as a percentage of the total project you're expecting to, for to utilize here with the North Angers, it's similar?
Well, those were, the two in Hood River were like 50/50, EB5 and conventional debt. And actually, it's even, the hotel was EB5 and Umpqua Bank, because that, back then, they would loan on a hotel. And I think it was, the Umpqua loan was a little bit more than, maybe it was 60%. But then the office building was 100% EB5 money. So, you know, if we're, if they're successful marketing our project to these investors, then we could go up to 75%.
Wow. Okay. Thank you. Counselor Afghan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to be cognizant with the terminologies we use. When we use alternative, it reminds me of alternative facts, which doesn't have a positive connotation. What I'm hearing What I'm hearing you say is that you are using a proven method of financing for this project, and your partners have experience with this type of financing, and that's what you have chosen to move the project forward because that's an option to you. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, good, thumbs up there. As you have heard me before is that I want to see visible progress out there. That means if you need any help, which I know that the city manager's office is very collaborative, helpful with making things happen for you so you can start having visible progress there. So if there's anything that's, needs the city council help, we will talk with the city manager and make sure that we can move the ball forward. So we're all in, we need to make it happen. So the schedule you put up has certain milestones. I would love to hear back from you on those dates, maybe, I don't know how often we check in, a quarterly basis, because we're running out of quarters based on our contract, and know how you are doing, and are these checks, check, check, we're on target to hit these milestones, or are we having challenges?
So the first check back, just so you're clear, is that if, if we approve of the concept of transferring the property, we'll have to amend the DDA. And they will need us to do that in the month of September because they would have to close on the property in the month of October. So they'll be back in less than two months.
Excellent.
And can at least give you a report at that time. And then based on what conversations we have with the county, who's told me that they're going to take up the question of CPACE this fall, we can also give you a report on whether that financing tool looks like it's going to be viable or not at that time.
This is great because I can see actions now, and I can see efforts that are going to show visible progress. So thank you to the city manager's office making it happen, and thank you guys for coming up with other options financing the project.
Thank you, thank you. And I just want to say that the city staff of Lake Oswego has been wonderful to work with. And so I appreciate the support and frankly, access and just help. And we're, we will be back. Just closing on the property will be several million dollars of progress. So, yeah, we won't be swinging hammers yet, but it'll be advancing us towards a groundbreaking. So, thank you.
Great, good. Okay, gentlemen, thank you very much. We appreciate the progress report. We look forward to talking to you again after our August break. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we are adjourned.